Good morning. This is the Bennington Select Board. We're gathered here on December, that's good, it feels like January 9th, is it?
Six.
Six? Anyway, we're going to work on the fiscal year 2019 budget. For those that have not had the benefit of this budget session like most of us have, Carson and Chad, you've got before you basically what was shared by Stu, and it's a very good template. It shows the major areas of changes, either up or down. That does not mean we have to limit the discussion to those areas. We've got the budget because it's the entire 2019 budget. What we'll do is hear from the various representatives of those organizations and departments that the community serves, and once the presentation is done, we will open it for questions, and then we'll see how far we can get. We've got a couple days scheduled for these meetings. So, without further ado, maybe Stu could just give us the highlight relative to your executive summary that was included with the presentation?
Well, I think, yes, thank you. I think the important thing to recognize here is that the budget that you have been presented includes all of the agencies at their funding level from last year. So, any changes in those funding levels will affect what the numbers that you read here. Overall, the combined budgets show an increase of 2.14%. The amount to be raised by taxes based on that increase, based on last year's grand list, is 1.75%, which is, I think, very good, given the situation that we're in. Today, you'll hear from police, fire, and at least highway. All of those budgets are relatively flat. Fire Department did show a bigger jump this year, about 5%. And Steve Crawford, the chief of the Fire Department, and Paul will outline where those increases come from and why they're necessary. And otherwise, the Highway Fund and the General Fund are both up in the range of 1.7% to 2.5%. So, I think the staff worked very hard to present a good budget to me, and I think I'm sitting here today feeling very comfortable about the budget I put before you.
Great. Thanks, Stu. Our job is to hear, make our own decisions and recommendations because this all goes before the voters in March. So, we've got to remember we're Vermonters, and we try to maintain as close as possible to being not spenders, but being responsible to the citizens that we serve. And as Stu said, the presented budgets make this coming year a pretty attractive one for us. But it still does not mean that we just say, "Fine, go ahead." We've got to look at the items that are presented to us and inquire because as representatives of the community, we have to ask the questions that we might anticipate from the community come March. So, without further ado, chiefs, could you open up however you'd like to present?
So, going, the first budget that we're going to present to you today is the Fire Department budget. I had the opportunity to work closely with Chief Crawford on preparing this budget for you today. Again, we prepare our budgets in October and November, and we anticipate what our spending is going to be in fiscal year 2019.
This is page 15, page, yeah. It's page 15, or actually it's...
So, what you're going to see here today, I'm going to turn this over to Chief Crawford. What you're going to see here today with that small jump in the Fire Department budget are things that are absolutely necessary for us to follow NFPA standards within the Fire Department, and also for the safety and security of the facility that we're currently occupying. So, with that being said, Chief Crawford will go over the highlights with you where you're seeing increases in the Fire Department budget, although small.
Okay. Are you looking at the highlights on page nine?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Yeah, okay. And the full budget for the board is on page 15?
Right.
Yep. For cross-reference, go ahead.
And just for the boards, I split these out so you can have both next to each other, which is kind of helpful to be able to look at both at the same time. Or if you don't do it, you can do it the old way with Post-its.
Great, thank you. The first one, 0345-10190, Uniform Equipment, that's the turnout gear that the firefighters wear. What we've done is incorporated an Excel spreadsheet, each firefighter in a different gear. The gear is dated for 10 years per NFPA standard, so at 10 years it loses its life to be valuable in a fire environment. We've identified, based on our current member status, how many sets of gear that we need to stay current. Therefore, that increased that, you know, the 24,000, I'm sorry, 24,620. So, each set of gear includes helmet, gloves, coat, pants, and boots, and those all have a 10-year life. Being totally outfitted, each firefighter is roughly in about $7,000 worth of gears, between $7,000 and $8,000. So, that was the increase there.
And maybe, it might help if we just talk, ask any questions as we hit these highlights. It might rather than come back. Right now, chief, total membership?
Total membership is around 64 members.
Active members?
And active members is around 40.
Great. So, is this a consideration each year? You try to replace about five sets?
So, with the, yeah, with the Excel spreadsheet now, we can identify, you know, this year is going to be an increase, next year it should go down with some. It depends on where we got, we were, you know, it used to be we asked for, you know, five to seven sets of gear based on that, but now we can track it per person to make sure those are all within standards.
Great, good. Folks, any other questions on that area? Good, thanks a lot. Next item?
So, the next item is fire buildings, 0345-70230. Small increase there, our kitchen in the fire facility. The fire facility this year is 20 years old. So, as we see wear into it, stuff like that, the kitchen cabinets and stuff with the plates and pots and pans and stuff like that, we're seeing the cabinets stress and start to sag. So, we're looking to, you know...
Everybody is.
What's that?
Everybody is.
Yeah. So, we're just looking to, you know, increase, you know, put some plywood lining and stuff like that and build them back up to make sure that they stay versus, you know, having to pull off the wall or anything like that. So, that's where the $2,100 there. And then, in effect, to try to save the purchase of, a lot of people are using this room now for a bunch of variable things, and we're trying to save a cost of the janitorial supplies, trying to put in electric hand dryers now versus paper towels and then, you know, garbage and such. So, we're trying to update it to modern times to be, you know, more green.
In fairness to the Fire Budget, this room does see a lot of use.
Yes.
We are holding a lot of public meetings here, not just for all of you, but for the state of Vermont and different things that are going on. And, you know, it certainly shows when the maintenance people are carrying out bags of trash, and one of the things we're trying to do is be a little bit greener and not have to use so many paper towels. So, you know, $2,000, although it seems like a lot of money, it really isn't, especially if we can be a lot more green around this facility. So, I think it's a good idea. I've spent some time talking with Larry McLeod and Mark Sawyer about that, and we're going to have hand dryers downstairs, and it's time to put them upstairs because people aren't going to truck all the way down three flights of stairs to use the facility. So, I think it's a good idea.
Chief, do we charge for the use of the building?
We are currently charging for the use. In fact, the Select Board did approve, I'm not sure of the date, a while back, to increase the fees for the use of this room. We do not charge for public meetings, anything that's open to the public, whether so-and-so wants to run for office or whatever it may be. We don't charge for that because this is a public building and the community is entitled to use it for public forums. So, in some of those meetings, we'll bring upwards of 100 to 200 people. So...
And editorial, we're really impressed by the condition you maintain. This is getting along in years, but still you maintain it in such good condition, and the visitors to the building often comment about the facility.
I think the firemen are proud of this facility without a doubt, and they do their best to maintain it themselves. And then, you know, Mark Sawyer and Larry McLeod and their group do an outstanding job in maintaining the facilities here in Bennington, you know, for the staffing levels that they have. So, I appreciate it.
Pass that along. Good. Any other questions on that area?
Can I just, how many hand dryers, I'm just curious, more than anything, does 2,000 get?
We should be able to put one in the mail restroom and the female.
So, they're $1,000 a pop?
Yeah. And that's nothing special. I mean, that's, you know, just plain paint. You go to Cabela's, their camouflage.
You can't see what you're doing.
Okay, I was just curious.
Go ahead.
And then, the next line, 0345-7010, Building Improvements, that money set for, if you go down in front of the fire station where the fire trucks pull out, the apron, when it was originally built 20 years ago, was concrete, and the concrete is now starting to lift and crack and move, creating quite a few hazards, not so much for the fire trucks, but anybody that's walking across the apron and stuff like that is really showing some wear. So, we met with the facilities people and then also with RJ about doing the improvement to the apron. So, the $11,500 is only to do half of it. We'd like to do it, you know, in order to try to stay in budget, we do half one year and then half the next so that we can replace that apron. And RJ can speak to it, but I believe it was tearing it up and then putting a new base down with black top, and then we'll go from there.
Are you talking about contracting this out, Stu?
Yes. When we get to the Highway Budget, one of the streets that we plan to do this year is River Street. So, we hope to be able to have the contractor do these in conjunction, one with the other. And it may be that we'll be able to perhaps do a little bit more than half if, in fact, we get good bid prices on the asphalt this year.
Is this from the road to the front door?
Correct, yep. If you look at where you can see the fire trucks, that concrete apron out to the road.
I was thinking for a second, it was just the short distance between, like, the road, it's really almost like 25 feet, 50 feet?
It's almost like 70 feet, 75 feet.
From the road to the doors?
Yes.
Shows how good I am with measurement.
We did have an incident out front with a slip, trip, and fall where a young lady broke her wrist. She tripped out front. So, I don't believe that was claimed against our insurance. They went through their own insurance, but it just really highlighted the fact that we need to pay attention to that.
Mr. Stewart, you're pretty sure that you're going to do River Street this year?
Yes. That'd be great. Go ahead, Steve.
Okay. And then, the, so, the lease payment is, this is going to be the first lease payment on the new fire truck that we have now. There's a rescue pumper that we sold two fire trucks to get the one at $49,910. And that, at this point, would be the only fire truck that we have financed.
The SCBA system, I know we talk about this every year, for the new members, maybe you could just explain what that is?
So, then, the self-contained breathing apparatus, which is the air packs that we carry on our backs in fire, you know, in a fire situation, we updated those this year. The reason that it increased a little bit is because when we budgeted, originally budgeted, we took a guess at the finance figures. They came in a little bit higher with the economy the way it is. So, and then we projected to go out 10 years on the payment plan with that, and it ended up being we could only go out six.
Six.
Six years. So, in order to stay in budget, I went from 24 air packs to 20 air packs and tried to keep the payments. So, the 20 air packs with what we'd had bought in the last two years for, you know, to demo or use them to make sure that's what we wanted, kind of brought us in a situation, you know, we got just what, exactly what we need. There's no reserve. So...
So, last year, we presented to all of you that we were going to spend $17,000 a year over 10 years to lease these air packs. The bottom line is, is that we now have to spend $24,000, but we're going to go from 10 to six. So, in as far as the financing charge goes, we were able to, I was able to work with Stuart and Steve. We used the money that we had set aside this year as a down payment, and we actually received less of an interest rate because we had money to actually put down on the air packs. So, really, the only increase you're seeing here is about $7,000, and that was, again, so that we can finance for six years instead of 10. So, in the long run, we're going to save money.
What's longer these good for?
So, again, it's based on the fact of, on a 10-year plan, basically, is what they're good for. They, you know, it's like computers, they upgrade every year to different models. But last year, I'm sorry, two years ago, they made a huge NFPA standard change. They went from the reserve airtime in the bottle from being at a quarter to actually being at a third. So, when you use two-thirds of a bottle, the bell starts going off. So, what that does essentially is the time in the house, eliminated it from an estimated 25 to 30 minutes in the house, it gives you about 15. So, the new air packs are, instead of being 2216 PSI, they're 4,500 PSI.
So, you had to cycle out all your old ones for brand new?
So, we decided to, correct, recycle them all out, and we cycle them all out to the newest, and they all meet NFPA standard.
So, we have 20 that are good for nine more years. Did you bought them last year?
We just got them.
No, we just got them.
They're 10 years.
So, 10 years. But my only question is, so you have, in 10 years, they're all going to be due for replacement?
Yes.
I just think it's kind of good to think about that because we're, if we end up at 10 years, we're going to end up with a big payment again. So, you don't have the ability, like, your uniforms or other things, to cycle them.
So, the benefit of doing the finance that we did, it's either you can buy a couple a year, or we finance, essentially what our finance payment would be is to buy, like, three a year, you know, versus over the six years.
And I'm not being critical, I'm just saying, it was just all at once is...
The benefit to it, though, is if, by changing the air packs the way we did, they're all uniformed. So, doesn't matter which fireman goes to the air pack, he's trained on that. If we would have crossed...
I get it, you don't...
You know, if we would have crossed it, it would have been a hardship of trying to not only fill the bottles, but people using them too. So...
So, in other words, we were buying two air packs a year here, and then they would change and change. And then you'd go on the truck, and even my SRT guys would go and grab an air pack, and we might have six guys in air packs, and three might have one and three might have the other. It's just not consistent and not safe, in my opinion.
Does that impact the insurance scenario at all by having updated versions, or is that just sort of a, it's fine, but it's already considered as part of the risk benefit?
Well, I think, I'm not sure it gives us a benefit with our insurance. Where it benefits us is that we have equipment that's within NFPA standards, and if something were to go wrong, we are within the standards of, you know, we don't have an air pack that's outdated and not qualified to be inside a fire scene and someone got hurt, which is going to cost us in the long run, right?
Yeah. So, I actually, I think the insurance is probably, are you rated appropriately? And you are.
And I believe they look at all that, especially...
Yeah. Basically, the insurer would assume that we are staying with the standards.
Yeah, if you got the standards, yeah. Okay, thanks. Other questions, I'm certain.
And this is for both chiefs. You know, I've complained, is the right word, but have been critical about how we spend our tax dollars. And it recently came to my attention, and I think you're aware of this, chief, about tire purchasing. And it's my preference that we do that as close to home, if not in Bennington, in all respects. And I called Stu, and he said that you were making significant savings with respect to buying tires from out of town, but you're having them mounted locally by Wasick's. And I'm just curious about, is it really significant savings?
Yes. I don't want to throw anybody under the bus here, but I will tell you that I consider Donnie Wasick a friend, and I will tell you that he has told me in the past that he can't, he can't purchase the tires for what we're purchasing them for.
Right.
That his cost is substantially higher. You know, as a government entity, we are getting a break on the tires. We are buying our tires on the police end of things. We're buying our tires from a Goodyear distributor over in Albany. They come into town, they go to Mr. Wasick's house, we store them in his garage, he does not charge us for that. And then, when we need tires, we have them. We've been doing this for years. Most recently, there was a, one of the fire trucks needed new tires. We did receive a quote locally, and then we went and we bought our tires over in Albany where we received a substantial break. I'm all about doing business local, but when we're trying to be considerate of the taxpayers in Bennington and save not just $50, $50 per tire, but we're talking hundreds of dollars per tire on a fire truck, I did authorize the tires to be purchased over in Albany.
Well, chief, I couldn't, I couldn't agree with you more. You can't be penny foolish and, you know...
It's a good question, but I think I'd like to just get through the highlights.
Sorry.
Then we'll have a general, you know, hitting the, like, questions like that. The transfer to reserve fund, maybe you could explain that one, chief?
So, the transfer to reserve, 4580-840, that, so we set aside each year a reserve fund. We try to, if we stay within budget, that funds gets transferred to our reserve for the purchase of future fire trucks. And also, there's $10,000 going into a reserve. Our radio communications down at the dispatch office here is really outdated. So, we've, a few years back, started setting aside monies for that to get the dispatch center updated to kind of match what the police department has now. As a redundancy, if something happens where the generator didn't work, or we lost power at the police station, their dispatcher could come over here. We have a backup generator here as well. It could dispatch out of our office. So, we're trying to make it user-friendly for the dispatchers as well as ours with updated equipment and to make sure they have everything they need if they come over here and have to use it in a situation, which we have. I mean, everything's mechanical and, you know, it could, we've had the generator not start or whatever. So, we're working towards that. We're almost to the goal of the console.
Yes.
We look to purchase that. You know, as soon as we get enough money in the reserve, we're working with Wells Communications, so with what exactly it's going to work out to be. Again, the same thing, we're checking the funding and make sure, the funding, and then we're getting budgets as well to make, I'm sorry, getting quotes as well to make sure that we're within, same thing we do with everything, you know, we try to get quotes.
I meant to look up at the fund balance for the equipment replacement, the fire replacements. What's that approximately now?
The reserve account currently has approximately $300,000 in it, and we don't differentiate. We don't separate radio reserve or fire trucks. Right now, it has about $300,000.
So, it looks like that we did not do one in '16, and we did not do one in '17, although it was budgeted. So, this is now budgeted for 60. I think it would be 60, no?
We've been transferring money into the, into the reserve account ever since I took over, anyway. And in fact, we increased the difference between the rescue pumper truck and the payoff on the building was $10,000. That's how we ended up going from $40,000, add the $10,000 for radio reserve, and then last year, we added another $10,000 to get it up to $60,000 because we know that we have a very large purchase coming in the future for a ladder truck, which is going to be approximately a million or a million point two. So, you know, that's why we have maintained that equipment reserve, and again, it has about $300,000. But we have been transferring...
Thanks. I thought I remembered that, but line, you know, 4580-840, which is transfer to reserve fund, shows nothing in '16 or '17.
And it shows $11,000.
Our finance director, Melissa Carrier, can explain why that doesn't show as an expenditure?
No doubt.
The room is clearing.
It's an accounting, it's an accounting thing. It's in the budget, but at the end of the year, I can't tell you at this moment without having more detailed information, which is back at the office. But after I determine how much money is available, as long as it wasn't, they weren't overspent in the Fire Department. If they were overspent, then it would cut into what was transferred. But the journal entry actually affects the fund balance, and you don't see it hit that expense line item directly. So...
So, I guess you, in this year, $11,879 was to the date of this report, was actually transferred into that?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
The, we had budgeted $60,000 last year, and right now, it says $11,879 actual to date. So, that's probably the date of the report that had been transferred over, no?
At the, the journal entry that I do to transfer to increase on the balance sheet, which is not a report that you're looking at right now, it doesn't hit that line item.
Okay.
That's not a good report to show it.
Okay.
And I apologize, I don't have the information as to how much exactly was transferred. I'd have to look at the actual reserve account to see what was transferred over in FY '16 and FY '17.
It sounds to me like, like, I trust your, and I'm sure your math is better than anything I could ever do, but I still don't quite understand why it wouldn't show up as we're looking back at '17 and '16. Why would there be no actions?
Well, it's not considered an expenditure ultimately. So, it doesn't, even though we budgeted it to be as an expenditure, it's actually, by transferring...
It's taking it from the fund balance. So, if you haven't used up everything that's been budgeted on the expense line items, then I take a portion of the fund balance from the Fire Fund, and I move it, I reserve it into the specific reserve account. It's a balance sheet entry using the funds available at the end of the year.
I see. So, in '16 and '17, there was a balanced fund surplus?
I'd have to go back and look to see, I believe, from memory that we did transfer a portion in each of those years, but I'd have to go look, and I don't have that available to me right now.
Because I think the chief said it's been transferred every...
Yeah, we've transferred every year. I mean, Melissa's got a lot on her plate as far as budgets go, but I do, I do keep in touch with her, and money was transferred in '16 and '17 to the reserve account.
Yeah.
So, I don't know the exact dollar amounts, but...
It would be nice, you know, Stuart, I don't know however we do this, but it would be nice for us to be able, or for any board, to be able to look back and say, "Well, this has been steady for the past so many years," or "This has gone up," or "This has gone down the past so many years," instead of having it look like a new expense the way it does on the sheet. But that's a small thing.
On that particular report, I can't change the way that is. As far as reserves, if there's ones that you're particularly interested in, I can certainly show you detail for the balance sheet. But on a monthly basis, you do receive the balance sheet for each fund. I'm not asking that you look and see how much, you know, do the math to see how much they increase from year to year, but that's where you can see it, is on the balance sheet report in your monthly financials.
And we could also include that in the highlights line item so that you understand that the money is being moved and how much is being reserved.
That'd be great, even if it just said, "Consistent with the past two years," or something like that, yeah.
Yeah, we can do that.
Thank you. Sorry to make a fuss on that.
No, it's good, it's a good question. Go ahead, chief. That's pretty much the highlights. Yep, I just wanted, okay. General questions to the, for the Fire Budget from the board? Go ahead, chief.
I'm just curious what you had to cut from your wish list.
There wasn't a lot that we cut this year. We really, my other two chiefs and Paul, we sit down and really go over it and try to make, you know, we see what is necessity. But we really didn't have a lot of cuts this year. I mean, we're really fortunate in the town of Bennington, you know, for the gear that we have and the apparatus and stuff. So, we're really trying to, you know, be responsible for the taxpayers of what we have.
I think, Steve, so we did reduce the number of turnout gear.
We did. I did cut the gear back by one gear, one set.
One set.
You know, just to try to make sure that, I mean, you know, it's expensive, but we try to make sure, and, you know, that's the thing with the budget that we're doing is we're really trying to project out like 18 months, you know. So, your membership goes up and down a little bit, too, so we're trying to be responsible with that. But we're trying to make sure that everybody that does it, everybody that fights fire with us has the best gear that they can have. So, but I would say that, you know, and again, we look into the future, you know, with the ladder truck purchase and all the technology that comes out, the standards that are set forth. If somebody volunteers in the town of Bennington now, it's, you know, to be a volunteer, you're still responsible for 200 hours of training to become a firefighter. It's a nationally certified program through the State Fire Agency. But, you know, that's, we try to make sure that everybody's with the top gear and that stuff. So, I don't see that we really cut too much out of it, but we try to make it responsible.
Okay. We did, we did make some modifications to the operating supplies. We asked... We asked for some additional pagers, and we did reduce that line as well. We cut it back to eight new pagers instead of the ten or twelve that we asked for. And then this year, we ran into a little bit of a snag, this current fiscal year. We ran into a little bit of a snag with some radio communications, and we just put about sixteen or so thousand dollars into some radio improvements. And so that kind of took away from some other things that we wanted this year, trying to be fiscally responsible. So we kind of put those back in, and it's really not a wish, it's something that we are going without this year so that we can improve next year. There's a wonderful program out there that the fire department is currently using. I don't want to take Steve's thunder, but it's, we're, we're looking at this program about I am responding. I have it on my phone, Steve has it on his phone, the chiefs, other members, where you can click on the app and indicate that you're actually responding so that the fire chief knows who is actually coming. With that, in the trucks, we'd like to place some iPads, for example, for pre-planning to know who's actually coming so that Steve or Bill or Jeff know who's coming and who is what level and who's going to be able to do what when they get there. Do we need an additional tone? And those are things that we had to forego in this current budget because we had to do some repairs to the radio. So, so we did ask for those again in this upcoming year. But with that being said, there's not a huge wish list here of things that we need. The fire department is great with their equipment, and I think that they're very responsible with it.
And the only other thing, this is more to you, Tom. I probably haven't toured a firehouse since maybe third grade. I would love, even before a meeting, since we meet here anyway, I think that would be really interesting.
A couple of years ago.
Yeah.
The, we, before the board convened, we got together, and it was really very interesting.
So that's it.
Maybe in the spring, not today.
Not today, no.
There's another time, too, that you could come, where if you came during our new experience camp week, the fire department comes out and works with the police department, and we utilize a lot of the equipment that's downstairs, the ladder truck, the extrication truck. We use all that equipment. It would be fun for you guys to come and watch the entire program, new experience camp, and see the equipment and how well the firefighters are trained and how they use that equipment. So instead of just looking at it, you can see how it works.
Is there a date?
Let's use the extrication truck. Yes, exactly. Look at that, yeah. Todd's all excited about that. So, yeah, I'll get to the dates. I'll email Stuart, and then he can let you guys know, and we'd love to see you.
Okay, thank you.
I'd love to see that.
What, the utilization of that truck?
Yeah, the equipment, yeah, how it's, how it's done.
What fiscal year are you guys planning for, to ask for the ladder truck?
Well, we're talking with Stu, we really like to go in front of the select board and see if we can get it on the ballot for March of this year to get, to go ahead and move forward with it.
What year?
This year.
Let's not spend a lot of time on that at this moment, then.
Well, I just wanted, just, so you're envisioning FY twenty?
No, eighteen, nineteen.
No, because I saw you, that didn't sound like a likelihood for.
What's that?
So what fiscal year?
It would hit the budget fiscal year twenty-one if we, so it would take a year to build the truck. Then normally, if we do the normal, like we did the rescue pumper downstairs, the first payment wouldn't be due until a year after we take delivery, so it'd be fiscal year twenty-one.
And apparently, what's happening here is we're, even though the truck might be in pretty good condition, we're running into an NFPA issue, and I get asked that, I get a look at that law that basically will force us to retire the truck in four years?
Yes, show us moved to retirement in four years. It should have been reserve status already, but we're trying to, trying to be fiscally responsible as well.
So what's the, so there are parameters for the length of the use of a vehicle, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay.
Fire apparatus.
And what, what is it for?
Twenty-five years to retirement if we follow NFPA standards.
Okay. I think this is a separate board agenda discussion, because I'm surprised by it.
We don't have those figures for you here today, but we, we have sufficient time in order to talk about this before the end of January and before the warning comes forward.
Because I think there's going to be some.
I just hear one point two million, and it perks my ears, that's all.
Well, you know, and I know, with all due respect, I know we're not going to discuss this, but there is a truck committee here. There are members in the fire department that are out visiting other departments, looking at equipment, looking at ladder trucks specifically. And so the fire department is, is moving forward with that, and they're trying to gather up all of that information. At the same time, I did speak with Steve, and, and, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna, so that there's, there's no question, we're looking for someone to come in and do an independent analysis of the current truck. And Stu did ask me this week, and I have not provided that yet, what the current NFPA standards are for the ladder truck. So I'm going to gather all of that together, I'll get it to Stu, and we'd love to come back and visit before the end of November.
That'll be a due diligence effort on your part and ours, because this is a surprise to me as far as the timeline, and I think it probably would be to some of the other members. And so if we move on this, it becomes a part of an education of us and the community as to the need. So it sounds like you're doing what you need to do, and we'll just have to follow that. And so we'll be inviting the entire working committee and subcommittees to visit with us in a, what timeline did you say?
Well, we have to, the warning must be prepared and signed by the end of January. It has to be published sometime first week in February, thirty days before the vote, so.
And we don't have a lot of time.
No, we have, we have another two meetings theoretically.
Yeah, okay. All right, thanks.
This is a more general question for both you chiefs, and that is with respect to, I know in the, in the past, you, Chief Doucette, have availed yourself to grant money. And I wonder if you chief have done the same with respect to the fire department, and really, are there, is there grant money available to fire departments?
So there is, each year, the federal government does awards for grant money. We do look at those projections of what they're available for, and then we look at the criteria. We've all been through, you know, the chiefs and the public safety director, we all go through like grant writing classes and qualifications. Normally, the prerequisites for those either qualify us or disqualify us, so that's when we decide whether or not we go after the funding. We've tried for, for several grants and haven't got, haven't received a lot of them. You know, they award throughout the entire country, so.
When was the last time you applied?
I believe the last time we applied successfully was probably about three years ago. And that was, I mean, we've applied, you know, through Homeland Security for the electronic equipment that you all use in this room. We were successful. We've, we've applied for radio equipment, we've been successful. But right now, through the Homeland Security grants, I set up Homeland Security Working Group in the state of Vermont, and grant money is just not what it used to be. We're just not seeing a lot of that. So as far as applying for grants, when things do come across the computer or in the mail, we do take a look at them, but right now, there's, I mean, there's, there's just not a lot out there that we're eligible for.
Is it a pretty complicated process?
Some of them are complicated. It's not, it's not so much applying for the grants. I mean, the federal government will give you whatever you want. It's, it's the reporting and the visits and making sure that you're actually using. I mean, if you stop and think about it, you know, the generator up at the middle school, generators in other locations, I mean, we did all that. The town of Bennington did all that to make that happen. But right now, there's just, that money is just not there. I mean, we're still getting body armor money at the police department. We get a few thousand dollars every other year for body armor. We still utilize the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. All of us do within the town, RJ, myself, you know, there's limited money available. So when we do find money that's available, we utilize it. I mean, not to talk about the police department completely, but highway safety grants or highway safety funding's been cut. You know, it's probably going to get cut more after the vote this week. But, you know, there's, when there's grant money that is available and we follow within the parameters, we do apply, and usually we're successful, but it's just, it just seems to be drying up.
And generally, there is no grant money available for major purchases of vehicle. It's generally firefighting gear, those kinds of things that you're looking at. I've never seen a grant for equipment purchase and truck purchase.
And finally, I just would, you know, I'd like to be reassured, and I'm sure the general public would like to be reassured, that we are to the best of your ability spending our tax dollars within the confines of Bennington businesses as much as we possibly can.
I don't think there's any, any doubt, Jim, that we, we are very frugal in the way we do these things. I mean, like I said, Steve and I met before the budget went to Stu. Stu went over it with a fine-tooth comb, asked some questions. We answered them, and that's how we got to where we're at today. We did make some small cuts, but again, when you look at how small the fire department budget is, and then you look at having to spend eleven thousand five hundred dollars on an apron out front, I mean, you're, of course, you're going to see that, that increase. And I think that, you know, we, we need to make sure that we're maintaining this facility, parking lots, aprons, building for the future. We don't want to run into problems.
I guess I was unclear. What I meant to convey or ask is that, you know, we're spending Bennington tax dollars and hiring Bennington businesses. That was really the central point that I'd like reassurance on.
We absolutely try to buy what we can in Bennington, absolutely.
All right, good.
Yeah, to that exact point, you know, it's worth just saying, yes, it's a five percent increase, but it's only a little over seventeen thousand dollars. So, you know, your budget is a relatively small budget compared to everything else we look at. Bennington gets a tremendous amount for our money from the fire department, and, and so, you know, just want to make sure that, yes, it's a five percent increase, but it's relatively a small number, and we really appreciate that. So.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do. I do have two questions, fairly specific. I don't know if they'll be too specific like the last one, but kind of to Gene's point, I know Stuart squeezes you very hard to come up with a balanced budget, and so I, I look as much at the, at the decreases as the increases to try to figure out what's been cut. And in the buildings category, there were two five thousand dollar decreases, so a total of ten thousand dollars. And I just wonder what, what specifically those two five thousand dollars cuts came from?
So the first five thousand dollars was a floor machine that we purchased last year to, to clean the truck bay floor. So with that purchase, we've purchased that.
Don't need to do it again?
So we don't need it again. And then the second five thousand was an air compressor. We're going to upgrade the air compressor into the back of the firehouse, maintains air to all of our fire trucks, so they're all up to air and ready to go when they pull off the floor. The compressor that we have in there now is a very large compressor that I think we acquired from Energizer some years ago, and we're going to update that. I mean, the trucks only have to maintain eighty PSI, so we're going to upgrade that to a much more efficient compressor. Again, trying to save the electric bill on the firehouse and stuff like that.
So, but those two things were one-time costs?
One-time costs. That's what the offset was, yep.
Okay, great. And then it's a relatively small increase, couple thousand bucks, but a noticeable increase in communications, is that?
So that's the radios that we talked about. So each firefighter carries a pager as well as our, we're trying to do the app on the cell phone. The pager, again, technology, so we, for years, had Miniter Fives. I think for about eight years, we've had Miniter Fives. They've upgraded to Miniter Sixes. The Miniter Fives are no longer eligible for parts, and then if we send them in for repair, it's a minimum cost of like two hundred and forty dollars a pager to even look at them and say it's worth the repair or not. The new pager is roughly four hundred and fifty to five hundred dollars for the new pager, so it makes more sense to be up to technology versus trying to send those in. And I'll be honest, probably ninety percent of the time when I send a pager in, they tell me it has water damage and it's not covered, or it's going to be a minimum of this to replace it.
And three thousand dollars covers that?
What's that?
Three thousand dollars is enough to cover that?
So we've, we've given and taken. So we have, there's a pager line and then a radio line. We bought more radios this year than pagers. Next year, we'll buy more pagers and radios, and we try to offset the cost, so that's where the fluctuation is.
Great, thank you very much. That's all I have.
No questions, just thank you. This is very thoughtful, and it's clear that you have really looked carefully at what you need and what you're going to ask the taxpayers for, so I thank you very much.
Thank you.
No questions, but thank you guys for the excellent work you do.
I just have one, it's an insurance question, the four eighty-three workers comp side. It's interesting, the fire department went down, at least the budgeted amount, where all of the others are obviously, are impacted.
And that relates to the fact that because firefighters are volunteer, I believe covers them with a, in a different way. They actually, if I recall, they actually go out and they buy the insurance from another organization, and so that price sets what they then charge on their rate for volunteer We've actually had a pretty good run of no injuries in firefighting, and that's always a good thing. So that also impacts the rates.
Thanks, that's all I have. Very good presentation, and it shows that you're working hard to stay within the context of available assets that we have in the community. Chief and the entire department, we all really appreciate the, you know, volunteerism is a sort of a vanishing, you know, part of our vocabulary, but it is evident that in our community, that's not the case. The volunteers that we have in the fire department are to be respected and appreciated. Thank you very much for representing them today.
Thank you.
Thanks.
If we're going to move on to the police, it's on page six of seventeen on the budget line item, and page four of the highlights.
You're all by yourself there, Chief Doucette.
Scared.
And I'm happy to say, this budget went up only one point nine percent, one point eight eight percent.
Did you find that when you went across the street to talk about budgets, that the screws were being turned on you?
Yes. Go ahead. Okay. So, first of all, on behalf of the men and women at the Bennington Police Department, I really appreciate all the support that the select board gives us. You know, our, our budget is up only one point eight percent, which is less most of the budget, large, not most, but a large part of the police department budget is a result of salaries, wages, insurance, and things of that nature. The first thing I'd like to hit on here with you is forty-one hundred, one hundred, which does address police salaries and wages. You will note that there is a decrease. The previous amount was two million forty thousand. This year, it's two million thirty thousand. Part of that is a result of younger officers having a step system within the union and paying the younger officers starting out a slightly less wage. The other piece of it is, part of this is last year, the select board was gracious enough to add an officer to the police department, which we were going to turn into an SRO. Unfortunately, a school resource officer. Unfortunately, we've had two people leave and go to the Vermont State Police in the last six months, and we have not been able to staff that SRO position. We've been running it on what we call a forty-one twenty detail, where the school pays a set amount of money and the officers volunteer to go over to the school. Right now, we're running forty-one twenty details at the CDC, at the high school, and one of the local elementary schools. And so we're able to maintain right now, just doing this with the forty-one twenty details. I did take an opportunity this week to talk to Jim Colkeen, knowing that I was going to be speaking with all of you today, just to let him know that we did cut a position from the police department, and it was going, it was the SRO position. Someday, I'm going to come back to you, and I'm going to ask for that back when we can get up to adequate staffing levels. The other piece of this is, unfortunately, Tom, you already brought this up, the police department saw a huge increase in workers' compensation insurance this year to the tune of forty thousand eight hundred dollars. So when you take a look at forty thousand eight hundred dollars and you're trying to be fiscally responsible and not show a huge increase to the taxpayers, one of the only ways, as I discussed with Stuart, to make this happen was to cut a position. So unfortunately, no one has lost their job. I want to make sure that the community knows that, but at the same time, we're going to have to staff the SRO position, at least this year, this upcoming year, differently than, than I had planned. This, again, includes all the step increases for union employees, and yet we, we still show a ten thousand dollar decrease in that, in that line. Again, that's just attempting to be responsible to the taxpayers in this community. Any questions about salaries and wages?
So the two people that stepped away and went with the state troopers, that, those funds are still in your budget?
Yes, because we need to fill those positions.
No, just so we're clear, though, so there's still two. No, just so we're clear though, so there's still two available hiring positions, although you cut one. There are plus two. Are you still looking for staffing?
Yes. So I have, I have an officer who is working with us part-time right now, who will be going to the academy full-time in February. And then, I still have to fill the position for the officer that just left. And then, just to bring you all up to speed, Lieutenant Dutcher, who's a very close friend of mine, will be leaving the police department in July. He is beyond retirement age and he was, he's an asset that will be missed, but we'll be looking to replace him as well, which those positions remain intact in the budget. The only thing we cut was the SRO position.
And just reiterating back to what I originally said, you cut one position, which was money that wasn't spent, but then the two people that stepped away for the state troopers, those funds are, you're waiting to hire, you're trying to hire?
We're in the hiring process as far as that, correct.
But is that why we're seeing a pretty substantial bump in overtime in the second line down?
The, the increase in overtime, the thirteen thousand four hundred and twelve dollars, that's an increase that is set by union contract. So what happens is, is you, you, we gave the employees a raise and then I still am asking for ten percent in overtime, which is what I generally ask for. And that increase is a result of increase in salary.
Oh, it's not an increase to cover the missing?
No, and then the only other piece is you see an increase as a result of adding Martin Luther King Day, which is now becomes a paid holiday for the union employees that are working. So down below in my spec sheet here, you know, there is an increase of, instead of eighty hours of holiday overtime pay, now jumps to eighty-eight for the employees. So that's, that's where those increases come from.
Going to, back to this workers' comp, that's, you know, taking your people off the street basically, you know, almost two officers, right? Like just the workers' comp increase, right?
Yes.
Is, that's because we're in a workers' comp pool, that our impact or our rating is impacting, being impacted by our claims? But could you maybe just tell us about what's happening?
Yeah, you're absolutely right, Tom. We are in a pool. We belong to the League of Cities and Towns Property and Casualty Insurance Fund. It is a self-funded program. We have seen several, not necessarily severe injuries, but they were injuries that have relate, have, have caused a long-term impairment in a particular situation. The individual may be able to continue to work for us, but there is a, essentially, they buy out the injury because it will never be the same. So we've had a number of those over the last couple of years. That pushes our rating up. The second thing that happened this year with the passive fund is that workers' comp costs are actually the fastest rising insurance costs, probably in the nation, certainly in Vermont. And the passive fund has actually been, in a sense, subsidizing from its general insurance accounts, its property and casualty insurance accounts, to the workers' fund account. And we're going through a process where we're correcting that subsidization. And so, you're going to, every town is seeing a slight bump due to that. We're seeing a bigger bump because of our, the problems that we've had. And remember, workers' comp, they look at a three-year window and it cycles out. So if you have three or four good years, you're likely to see your rates drop significantly. You pick up a couple of bad years and that, all of a sudden, your rate jones.
Are the claims that we've experienced based upon confrontational scenarios or?
In every case.
Okay. Which just shows again, the state of society and what the police officers have to deal with on a day to day basis.
And we're hoping, and I think Paul, Paul may even be seeing this, we're hoping that now that we have outfitted our department with electronic control devices, that's what they're called, right? You got that one right?
Yes, sir.
What does that mean?
Well, they're tasers. But that's a, that's a brand name.
That's a brand name, sir.
So now that we've outfitted, we have actually seen a decrease in the number of physical confrontations. Am I right on that?
Yes. I, I don't want to dwell on this, but we have seen an actual decrease in injuries. We've had the taser, or the electronic control devices made by Taser International in place now for approximately six months. The tasers have been displayed on numerous occasions, have not been discharged. And we've been fortunate with that, that we've not had to actually use them. We've had situations up in the hospital parking lot, for example. There was an individual with a knife, holding the knife to his throat. The officers were very close to him, deployed the electronic control device, pointed it, the red dot comes on and the individual asked if it was a taser. The officer indicated that it was a taser and he immediately dropped the knife and became compliant. We've had other situations, which I'm not going to bore you with war stories. So we have seen a lot of compliance since going through these electronic control devices, thereby reducing, and it's going to take a couple of years for us to get out of this, this mess. I mean, are officers still going to get hurt? Absolutely. But at the same time, we have seen a decrease in injuries over the last couple of months.
Just one general question with respect to the electronic control devices. You said that you haven't fired them all yet?
We haven't discharged an electronic control device and actually hit anyone with it. We have not had to do that.
And I wonder if any of the town employees, including you Stu, would volunteer to see if these machines actually work?
Oh, they work. I mean, we did the training right here in this facility.
Yeah, really?
And it was, it was outstanding.
Oh, I'll bet.
Brought tears to my eyes. No, but it really, it really, it really has been a good program. I mean, as you all know, I was resistant at first to this, but you know, sometimes change is good. And so far, so good.
Do the officers participate in any formal fitness program scenarios? That doesn't sound like our claims predicated upon someone being so-called out of shape like the chair, but do you have a fitness programs?
We, we right now, I mean, a lot of, a lot of the officers are doing their own thing as far as physical fitness goes. You know, the town is good to us in the sense that we do have the opportunity to use the Bennington Recreation Center if we so choose. The officers, the full-time staff all have membership cards to the rec center. That's provided at no cost to the employee. And I don't want to advertise for any particular facility, but they are using local facilities as well. I have an officer that lives out on the west end that runs to work and runs home every day. So, in this weather, but you know, I mean, so the officers, it really doesn't have anything to do with them being out of shape when they do get hurt.
Would it help if they had the incentive, maybe it sounds like with corporate memberships or something in, in the local gyms that makes it easier to participate in programs like that? Maybe we can talk about that another day.
Yes. I don't, you know, I've not had an opportunity to understand whether those things exist. Because we do offer the rec center membership free. They can work out there. The equipment's relatively good at the rec center. It's perhaps not as, it's not as much of it as you might get at one of the private clubs, but.
I mean, you brought it up. I'll share with you what the officers' thoughts are very quickly. The officers' thoughts are, you know, they would love to have something like that because, for example, the officers that work midnights go home and go to bed and get ready, get up and then come back to work. And you know, the rec center is not always, it's not always conducive for them to go to the rec center because it's not always open. We don't go to the rec center anymore after hours. And you know, that's something that the officers have asked for in the past and we just, we just not have, we haven't accommodated. I don't know what a, you know, there are fitness centers in Bennington that are open twenty-four seven, you know, and you know, that might be something that, that we can address down the road.
Let's look at it. I didn't mean to divert.
No, that's fine.
Good. Any other questions on that area?
Excuse me. As far as workers' comp, you said you're hiring younger officers. Will that impact the insurance premium?
I don't believe so. I mean, I think that's more for Stu to answer, but I think because we're in this pool, you know, we have to go. It's almost like when you get points on your license, right? You have to, you have to get rid of those and we have to kind of get rid of the points against our workers' compensation, so it goes down, right? You lose your points on your license, your insurance goes down. I think it's the same thing.
It's not age? Okay.
Good. Let's go right into the equipment area. Okay. Are we all set, Don, with the overtime question? Because my increase here only shows thirteen thousand dollars, which is miniscule compared to?
Yes. Yeah. Well, I was wondering if that was related to the vacancies or if it was something else?
We keep it, I do my best to keep it at ten because, you know, what we see is, you know, investigations that have officers stay after ship, investigations that have to occur when the officer's not on duty. And I'll share this with you too, which I have in my notes and I was going to share anyway. Right now, we're, we don't get a lot of cooperation from the state of Vermont when it comes to court. We don't get to schedule officers to go to court, for example. We pay the officers a minimum three hours. Now, when officers, this is all relatively new in the last month. Now, when they get scheduled for traffic court, for example, I used to go to traffic court and I'd be scheduled at nine-thirty to ten-thirty and I'd have fifteen tickets, right? So I have to work those out. Now, what's happened is the state of Vermont, with their wisdom, has decided that they're going to schedule four or five of my officers for a nine o'clock time slot and maybe it goes all the way to twelve o'clock. Or maybe there's a break now and the officers have to come back at one o'clock. And their tickets still haven't been called. So of course, we're going to see an increase. It used to be that Paul Doucette, the police chief, would get a notice from the judicial bureau saying, hey, is Dave Dutcher and Dave Faden and Cam Grandy, are those guys available for traffic court on this day? And we would indicate yes or no. Now it doesn't matter. They just arbitrarily schedule people because they want me to notify them when an officer goes on vacation. When you have twenty-five people, I'm not going to notify the Vermont Judicial Bureau every time someone's going on vacation. That's a waste of my time. So we have to keep our overtime works at so that we have that money so that we can pay these people to go to court, so on and so forth. The state is just, they do what they want to do.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I just ask, so, so how are you dealing with being down a couple officers then if you're not increasing overtime? It seems like that could really stress the department.
So it does stress the department in the sense that we're just not able to be as proactive as I would like them to be. You know, we still maintain a minimum of three officers on each shift and we're doing our best with that right now. You know, I don't want to get into details. We're down two and, and you know, unfortunately, I have an officer that has a personal illness that's going to be out for a few months and, you know, but we do the best that we can and sometimes we have to move people around and, you know, follow the union contract, but we move people around to help cover things and we do our best to avoid overtime when we can.
And Gene, following up on that, the fact that we're down two officers now will impact this current fiscal year in which we're currently working.
Right.
Not necessarily the fiscal year beginning July one, because we shouldn't be up or close back to staff.
Don't you have one retiring too? So that makes three?
Yeah. Well, Lieutenant Dutcher will retire, but again, I've got one going to the full-time academy in February. We're going to hire so that we'll have someone go to the, we'll have, we're going to hopefully hire those two spots so that we have people go, two people go to the full-time academy in August. I made the mistake of having a meeting on Battle Day prior to the parade and I told my staff we were going to be up to full staff for the first time in about fifteen years. And that backfired. I won't do it again. So.
I remember in the last couple of years, we talked about just the training expense to replace these officers. Doesn't come, even if you've got someone that's coming in with a lower rate?
Maybe for another day, but I will tell you that I've agreed through the Vermont Chiefs' Association to represent the chiefs with the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. I think you're going to see some legislation introduced this year. Hopefully, that will help us in the sense that the state of New York, for example, if you take a law enforcement position in the state of New York and you leave that position within so many years, the department that you're going to then has to reimburse the department that you're coming from for lots of things. And that would be very beneficial to me. And we've asked for that. I mean, body armor, eight hundred and eighty dollars, a winter coat at three hundred and eighty dollars. I mean, all these things add up. We take them in, we operate a quartermaster system at the police department. We just don't take the uniforms and throw them out. We try to make it so that they fit someone else, but at the same time, it's very costly. I don't want, I don't want someone's body armor that they've been wearing on their, on their skin for the last two years. I don't want to wear that. So then we take that body armor and we use it for training. When we go up to the range, we put it on mannequins, blah, 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 blah. And unfortunately, it gets destroyed, but it's good practice. We're not just throwing this stuff out. We make use of everything that we have. I would rather that we keep people for twenty-plus years
Yeah. Then use the body armor there.
And use the body armor.
Was that in-state, the financial repercussions you mentioned there, is that I moved from Albany to Saratoga? Are you mentioning that there's a possibility could go across state lines? Doesn't seem as though that would be appropriate.
It would only affect, it would only affect Vermont agencies.
How common is it that?
Hypothetically speaking, the Vermont State Police poaching from all the municipalities in the state of Vermont, because they're seeing a one-third of their department turning over, right? So they call it freebies. I don't care if we're on the record or not, if we're on TV. That's what they refer to these guys as, as freebies, because they're already trained. They've been through sixteen weeks at the academy, three weeks post-basic training. They've got experience with a wonderful law enforcement agency. So they come with experience and they've just put on a different uniform and they get to go home at two o'clock in the morning and they get a take-home car.
Is the attrition you're seeing, I feel like I'm setting you up for a softball here. Is the attrition you've seen, generally speaking, from your department to the Vermont State Troopers, or is it also to other local police agencies within the state?
We have had, in the last five years, I believe, we had an officer go to South Burlington, but generally, it's to the Vermont State Police.
Okay. Thank you.
Unless you want to start buying take-home cars. Can we talk about that?
Bicycles.
Just kidding. Bicycle. We've started that unit. You'll see that in my report this year. We've got that unit back up and running again.
Right. There's a fitness part there.
Horses is not an option. So, are we all set, sir? Please. Okay. So under, I know you have your, your shortlist here. We've addressed salaries and workers' compensation. We'll get into the equipment. I just want to let you know some positive things. Under forty-one hundred two-ten, that used to be a thousand dollars. We've increased that to two thousand dollars. That is so that the police department can be more involved in the community with the new experience camp, the bicycle helmet program. Funding has dried up. We talked about grants. Funding has dried up for bicycle helmets. We try and we try and we try. This spring, we're planning a huge bicycle rodeo down on the Walmart parking lot. And my employees currently donate two dollars a week out of their, out of their paycheck. I know it doesn't sound like a lot, but it's a hundred and four dollars a year that they donate and that goes into a fund and we're using that money for bicycle helmets and handouts and things like that. So I did ask for an additional thousand dollars in there and that remains intact because I have a group of officers that really want to be involved in this community. We're reading at the local elementary schools. We're doing all sorts of wonderful things in the community and we just needed a little more support and Stu was great about leaving that in there. Line zero-one forty-one ten-two-twelve K9, there's a four thousand dollar increase that there was no money in that line last year. Our K9 program is up and running. If you have a scanner, you can hear Gracie talking most of the time when Officer Morowski is trying to talk. And it's, it's a wonderful program and we're still running off of, we're still using funds from the fundraiser that we had two years ago, but I think that eventually that's going to dry up and so, you're seeing four thousand dollars there. I will also share with you, as far as grants go, Jim, we just applied for K9 vested interest and there is a vest coming for K9 Gracie when she gets measured and fit. And that's about a two thousand dollar expense that we're not going to have to pay. It's going to be funded through, through a grant.
What kind of dog is Gracie? Just out of curiosity?
A very nice German Shepherd.
As they all are.
Yes. And she, I'll tell you, she's been very successful, not for today, but she's very, very successful. The state police needed her about a month and a half ago to track a burglary suspect and Gracie brought the state police and Officer Morowski right to the individual. Wasn't me. That's not what the dog's had. So, and she's had other very successful tracks as of late, so the dog is doing very well. Under zero-one forty-one forty-six eighty, you saw an increase there of seventeen hundred and forty dollars. That's our Morpho Track maintenance. That is a result of, if you don't know what a Morpho Track is, back in the day when I first started, we used to use black ink and a roller and a piece of glass. Now we take everybody's fingerprints electronically. We submit them directly to, to the center down in Virginia and we know if people are lying or not telling us who they really are. We have to maintain the maintenance agreement with them. That is a machine that we purchased with Homeland Security Funds and we are responsible for the maintenance contract, which is now forty-two hundred dollars. But I will tell you that that little piece of glass, and I'm sure none of you have been fingerprinted, but that little piece of glass is about six thousand dollars to replace. So the maintenance, the maintenance agreement, having them come and work on our machine and maintain it, is definitely worth. So, the maintenance, the maintenance agreement, having them come and work on our machine and maintain it, is definitely worth it. You're also gonna see, we're gonna do this together, under forty-one, seventy-seven-sixty and forty-one, seventy-seven-seventy. There's a five thousand dollar increase in electricity use. But under seven-seventy, there's a forty-five hundred dollar decrease in the fuel use at the police department. So, in my mind, those pretty much offset. The other big piece of this budget is forty-one, seventy-eight-ten. There's an additional sixty-five hundred dollars in there for an increase in building security at the police department. We plan on changing up the front entrance and making that secure so that later in the evening, perhaps nine-thirty, ten o'clock, those front doors will be locked. And the dispatchers will be able to control who comes and goes in and out of the police department. As you know, it's staffed twenty-four hours a day, three-sixty-five, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. So, that's, again, some maintenance, some security upgrades.
Have cameras been added to the lobby?
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay. Good.
Very beneficial.
The, pardon me?
Very beneficial.
And the exterior as well?
The exterior as well. And we record everything now.
Good. Good. Glad to hear it.
So.
I know the, our new energy program, and I think we'll be adopting the amendment, talks about a high use of the municipalities for energy. And I think the police department gets one of the royal high scores because of the nature of the building. Is it, is there anything that we can do or even on a reserve or long-term outlook, Stu?
Well, it's interesting that you bring that up because...
Yes, sir.
The, when the building was converted to a police department, a heating and ventilation system was installed. It's a roof-mounted unit that attempts to push warm air and in the summer, cool air through a duct system to provide both air conditioning and heating. It is a system that has never really met our expectations. Whether or not we undersized it in the beginning or what, we really don't know. But we have been working with a heating-ventilation consultant, taking a look at the system. We're looking at a, an upgrade to that facility. Probably, I'll be approaching you for engineering funds to actually do the design. It's a two-phase process, which will actually cost in the range of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to upgrade the facility, remove the roof-mounted unit. And perhaps will have an impact on the amount of electricity that we use to run that system. Right now, we still continually have problems with moisture in the basement. As maybe you don't know, but the water table is really directly beneath the building, not very far below the building.
My office is that way.
And, I mean, we're running pumps pretty much all the time to keep that water level down. The beauty of living in the river bottom. And so, the ventilation system doesn't successfully remove all of the moisture from the downstairs. So, we have some problems there. And we have heating issues in various parts of the building depending on how far they are from the actual heating unit. So, I'll be talking to you folks about the phase-one design. And at some point, we may look to use the capital reserve that we've been building to at least, do at least phase-one of that project. And then ultimately, in the long run, phase-two. But the building needs it. We're kinda limping along. And I think that drives some of our electrical cost up. And as you know, Green Mountain Power wasn't awarded a five percent rate hike just recently. So, it'll teach us all that the less energy we use, the more we're gonna pay for it.
So, can I ask, so, so that kind of, that kind of question doesn't end up here as a budget item because...
Because we'll be reaching into the reserves that are already established by this board for use in those governmental buildings. And it's a decision you folks will have to make. And we'll probably deal with that on a regular scheduled board meeting.
Thank you.
I've got a question for you, Stu, with respect to alternative energy systems. I remember when I had the cart, you may remember this, Jeannie, that a CCB building converted, what's, what was it called?
It's a geothermal system.
Geothermal. Have you looked into that? Because really, essentially...
We actually have looked into the geothermal system. I don't, I don't remember the problems that we determined we might have with the police facility. But we have looked into that. We also looked into it very briefly at the town offices as well.
And is there a cost comparison that you can offer?
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head. And it was, it was probably several years ago that we took a look at it. So, those costs wouldn't even be viable today. We wouldn't know whether they were active or not.
I think it's worth looking into for all of the town building, including the rec center, town office, police station. Even just to satisfy your, my curiosity. Okay?
Okay. So, just in, in defense of, and not, it's just ironic that it came up. There's no heat in the police building right now. And it is, it is down to about fifty-seven degrees. I came in last night at about six-thirty and reset the heating system. And it did come back on. And I will try it again when I'm done here. But that's, when it gets really cold like this, that's what happens. The roof-mounted units, they shut down. And they just, they don't keep up. And that's the text message that I received as chief. It's getting cold in the building again. And the duct temp is at sixty-nine. The duct temp should be much higher than that. Last night, when I reset it, it got up to about ninety-two very quickly, which is what I need to do here shortly. So, I just wanna share one more thing with you. And this is not for any other reason except for you all to understand what it costs to run dispatch. The state of Vermont right now, a lot of smaller agencies are being dispatched through the Vermont State Police. The state police are looking to get out of the dispatch business. And it's not a secret. You know, I've been to Waterbury with the Chiefs Association and sat through meetings. And I, I wanna share this with you. For the town of Bennington to run the dispatch center twenty-four-seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year with salary and benefits, pension, everything, the cost to the town of Bennington is three hundred and ninety-five thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars. We currently collect a small amount of money from the Bennington Rescue Squad. We collect a small amount of money from Pallinol, both for fire and EMS. And, you know, we have the ability to dispatch for smaller communities such as Shasbury, if the need be, or Arlington. We have their tone alert systems already programmed in. And one of the things that we'll have to take a serious look at is those communities may very well come to us and say, hey, can you help us out? But it's time to evaluate how much we're really charging for dispatch services. And a lot of times, that's done through Stuart and perhaps to all of you. But I'm gonna give you a great example. And I'm glad that Forrest is here in the back of the room. Forrest does know about this. I'm not hiding it. Currently, the Bennington Rescue Squad, for example, pays the town of Bennington eighteen thousand dollars a year for dispatch services. Eighteen thousand dollars, when it costs us three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars a year to provide dispatch. The Bennington Rescue Squad currently utilizes about thirty-five percent of dispatch, which is a very modest and fair way of doing things. So, if you do the math on that, that would mean that the Bennington Rescue Squad should be paying us about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars a year for dispatch services. You need to break down what it actually costs to run the communication center, the dispatch center, and figure it out what they're actually paying. So, that would mean that currently, Bennington Rescue, instead of eighteen thousand dollars a year, should be paying the one thirty-eight. So, right now, we're providing Bennington Rescue with a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of free dispatch service. And I think you all need to think about that when it comes time to allocate money and things of that nature. I'm not here to do your job. You guys have a tough job. There's a lot of constituents out there that want this and want that. But I wanna share with you that it's very costly for dispatch. And we have a wonderful team of dispatchers. They do an amazing job. And, you know, we comply with mutual aid standards. And that's another piece of this. Bennington Rescue Squad is very busy. They do a good job in this community. However, you know, we're running a lot of mutual aid right now where we have not been able to get the Bennington Rescue Squad to respond to critical incidents.
As a percentage, how many times does that happen?
I would have to go back and do the math on that. I don't know. I'm talking about the horrendous accident that we just had out on two-seventy-nine, where two vehicles came together and one of them split into three pieces. We needed a helicopter. We had to wait for Arlington and we had to wait for Pallinol. So, now, we're dispatching Arlington Rescue. We're dispatching Pallinol Rescue, which they pay us. But we're also doing a lot of calls that are going, that are coming from New York State into our dispatch center requesting Bennington Rescue for ALS intercept. So, now, we're providing services for out-of-state calls. And I think that we need to take a serious look at what we're actually charging for dispatch services. And I'm not just saying with Bennington Rescue Squad. We need to take a look at what we're charging Pallinol. And if it comes to fruition, that we have the ability, and my people are capable, of taking on dispatching for some of these other smaller communities north of here if, in fact, the state police gets out of this business of dispatching.
Are they gonna get out totally? Is that what the rumor is?
That's my understanding. They wanna dispatch for themselves.
That would be it.
There's, there's a lot of issues which I would rather go into executive session than talk openly about. But there's a lot of issues. And, you know, it's, in dispatch, they are realizing that dispatch is very costly. It's very, very costly.
Staff at twenty-four-seven.
Could I ask two questions in relation to that?
You may, sir.
So, the first one is, if Vermont State Police are, again, they're not here to comment, as is Forrest and Brian are in the back. So, they're not here to comment. But the first question relating to dispatch. So, Vermont State Police are looking to get out of this business. What's an alternative in respect to, if it's probably castrated to them, why are we still in the business and we're looking to take on more? Why isn't the question also, why don't we dismantle our dispatch business and look to outsource it?
Because there's no one here, there's no one around here that's gonna do that. I mean, we would be, we, the town of Bennington would be that hub. We would be the people that would say, hey, we're gonna open up our communication center because it's gonna be very costly to start a communication center in a separate building somewhere else.
From a business standpoint, the, the option to outsource your dispatch business does not exist?
No. Absolutely not.
That's a question. So, I'm ignorant to the subject. So, outsourcing that particular portion of a town's necessity does not exist?
Does not.
Okay. So, how much currently of the dispatch business does the Vermont State Troopers consume of our need? You know, you're saying they're getting out of it?
So, let me give you an example. Wilmington, the town of Wilmington over the mountain, they have a police agency. They have their own dispatcher, I believe, from seven in the morning until four in the afternoon. After that, it gets turned over to the Vermont State Police. The Vermont State Police are now saying, hey, you need to look at other alternatives. The other alternative for Wilmington is to now hire a dispatcher that can work from four to twelve. And then somebody that can work from twelve to eight, very similar to what we do. But constantly having, now, in the Northshire, Manchester Police Department does exactly what we're doing down here, right?
They offer twenty-four-hour service.
They are, their dispatch is on twenty-four-seven. So, and you gotta remember that, living in rural Vermont, we're not just gonna take our dispatch and shut it down and outsource it. We have, we have too many obligations and too many things that we need to take care of here.
No, I respect that. But I also, I mean, not to be critical in this idea of, I mean, you know how much I appreciate the specifics you're putting in here. The reason we have these meetings are for the, this group sitting here to ask those financial questions.
Absolutely.
I'm not, I certainly, when you look at it from a person-to-person basis, we want, you know, a person sitting in Bennington to answer that call. From a fiduciary standpoint, I wanna look at all the options. And if all the options include something called outsourcing, and I'm not referencing another country right now, but I'm just...
I get it.
Looking for, you know, is it at a state level? You're telling us the state troopers are getting out of the business. You know, what other options are there? So, there's not a three-hundred-plus-thousand-dollar line item that is challenging to answer.
Right.
And then also, in respect to the, you know, the rescue squad, I, I think that's definitely a longer conversation that, you know, needs to be had in respect to if they're using thirty percent of your, your, you know, current capacity or your current calls every, every year. I think they should be able to comment on it too. You know, it's a Pallinol example. Or you, the example you used on two-seventy-nine, that, that, I don't know if it was a car accident or what you referenced a few minutes ago. I'm just wondering how often that happens for you. Not necessarily, you know, you mentioned Arlington Rescue came down.
Right. They have a mutual aid system. My point was not, was not that they weren't available, not to be critical of them. Forrest and I have a great relationship. And we're meeting this week, in fact. But it's to let you understand that now we have to dispatch other ambulances. And I think that that needs to come into the equation as well. Down the road.
What's the timeline for the state police getting out of the dispatch business?
This, this last meeting I went to was about a month and a half ago. But ultimately, that's, I mean, according to the commissioner, that's their ultimate goal.
By, no one's thrown out a date?
We were not given a date. So, I mean, this has reared its head a couple of times over the last couple of years. But now, it seems like we're actually gonna start moving forward with it. It's conversations that I've had with Stuart, you know, because we ultimately could become a, depending on what Manchester wanted to do. I mean, there's, there's a, there could be two communication centers in Bennington County. Could be the Bennington Police Department and the Manchester Police Department, which basically is what it is right now. They would do Northshire. We would do Southshire. That's something that could, could happen. You know, all the little towns, you know, up north that have their own little fire departments and stuff like that. If the Vermont State Police opt not to dispatch for them anymore, then they may, you know, Danby and Dorset and places like that, they may have to rely on Manchester. You know, right now, all the agencies in this area pretty much rely on Bennington for that. So.
I just hope they would give...
Oh, ample notice. I, yeah, I'm sure.
This is, you know, interesting and appropriate discussion because it goes to the Bennington taxpayer underwriting the entire south part of the county.
Right.
And that's gonna be important as we move forward because that has to be addressed. And I think the rescue squad is looking at it from their perspective of expense too. So, I think there's a lot of dovetailing here that maybe in the hospital, being a part of this overall discussion, really has to be brought into it. But this is a good, it's a heads-up because it's, you know, coming attraction here or detraction. But right now, the Bennington Police Department, supported by the Bennington taxpayer, is supporting a lot more than the town of Bennington.
Yeah, it could be a revenue driver for us. I mean, I'm not being critical of that. I mean, it could be an opportunity.
I agree.
Get rid of all the business, which, and we lose an expense, or take on other towns if we can handle the capacity and...
You're in charge of it.
Bring on money.
Right.
Goes both ways.
I'm not gonna dwell on this with you, but I wanna throw this out just so you understand. I mean, you know, there's a move in the state of Vermont to make all municipalities have their own law enforcement now. You know, and think about how costly that's gonna be to towns like Pallinol and Arlington and places like that. I mean, you're either gonna have to contract with the sheriff or you're gonna have to have your own law enforcement. You know, and if you, if you follow what's going on in statewide politics right now and which direction the state of Vermont is headed as far as law enforcement goes, you know, you do some research and you'll see that, I mean, I'm one hundred, I one hundred percent know what I'm talking about. I mean, I feel bad for the town of Pallinol. I mean, they, I mean, they could potentially come to Stuart and say, hey, how do you think, how do you feel about regionalized policing? You know, I mean, that, that potentially could happen. And it could happen as soon as a year from now where Pallinol might be looking to the Bennington Police. We service, we get calls from Pallinol residents all the time. Hey, could you come do this? Could you come do that? Hey, this got stolen. And, you know, and we refer them. And there's nothing against the Vermont State Police. They're just looking to, at a different style of policing. And, you know, we may be faced with having to make that decision down the road, which would, you know, create us to, or cause us to have to, you know, fund eight more positions, of course, at their expense. I mean, this is a big, big picture out ahead of us. And I think that as a select board, we should be thinking about that, you know, in the future.
Can you, can you explain why the state is manti...
No, no, let's not get into that.
I can't do it now.
Just curious.
Because we'll be here all day. And I'm sure RJ has better things to do.
Let's get into the mundane, the machinery and equipment.
Oh, I missed that. I'm sorry. Look at that. I thought I was getting out of here. Jeez. Oh, I missed that. I'm sorry. Look at that. I thought I was getting that. Jeez. Machinery and equipment, 4180-830. I'm sorry about that. Let me just switch.
No, it's my ticket.
That's my fault. So proposed this year are two new vehicles, an interceptor SUV and a Ford sedan, which is gonna replace vehicles. I know that your printout says 100,000. It's more like 115,000 miles. And the costs associated with these vehicles also includes the switchover of current equipment into the, into the new vehicles. On the SUV, you know, would include a push bumper and all the ancillary equipment that would actually go along with that. One of the vehicles that we're looking to replace currently, or recently we found out, needs the head replaced, which is gonna be about $3,000. I spoke to Stuart and told him that I'm just not willing to do that with a vehicle that has as many miles on it. And we're just gonna nurse this thing along as best we can and look to replace that. So in that, in that line, there is an increase of $19,000 as a result of buying two vehicles. Generally, I ask the board to replace one vehicle and this year, we are, we're asking to replace two. The other piece of this is where we get the savings, because you're saying to yourself, geez, chief, you added a vehicle and it only costs $19,000. Well, you have to keep in mind that this is where our electronic control device, this is the line I used last year to purchase electronic control devices, and that was right around $24,000. So that's why you're seeing the $19,000 instead of the actual cost of a second vehicle, which is absolutely needed. Any questions about that?
That's all part of your capital plan, your regular
Yes, in fact, we just had a staff meeting this week and we talked about the capital plan. And I think that that's, we're beyond, honestly.
This particular vehicle?
The second vehicle's beyond your
Yes. Yeah, we've done very well with it, but it's very ill right now.
So then for the, in upcoming years, we would expect to go back to the one vehicle per year rotation?
The next two years, I believe you're gonna see only a one-vehicle purchase. And then three years from now, you'll see another two-year, another two-vehicle purchase. One of these vehicles is anticipated to last three years. The other vehicle's anticipated to last seven years in this particular purchase in fiscal year 2019.
It's just less mileage?
Yes, sir.
And you still buy sedans versus SUVs, or you'd like to have a combination?
We've been buying SUVs. This is gonna be something new from Ford. It's an all-wheel-drive sedan. And, you know, that's if we go with the Ford. I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna take a look around. We're not, we're not completely set on the Ford. We know we can't afford Chevys. The Chevy prices are just way too much. Some, some of the officers, you know, wanna look at Dodges. I know that the Vermont State Police right now are trying out some Dodge vehicles. I don't know. I just, I don't know. That's something I have to really consider. We've had really good luck with the Fords and I think I'd like to stay with the Fords. But, you know, for some reason, like the New Hampshire State Police, they're going with Dodge. I don't know. But we'll do our best to spend the least amount of money and get the equipment that's needed to satisfy the use that we have.
Do you have to go very far for a competitive bidding scenario for the?
Most of the competitive bidding is in Burlington, as you guys all know, or most of you that are on the board. We try to keep our business local and we buy from Carbone. That's who we've been buying our vehicles from. And quite honestly, for the two people that are new to the board, I'll tell you what happens. We kinda beat Carbone up a little bit and we do the best that we can to get great pricing from them. They're usually within about $100 of the state bid price. And for me, $100, this is what it costs me. I have to take two people and send them up to Burlington, to the Ford dealer up there, and bring them back on overtime. Not cost-effective. Buy local, save money, because I'm not paying the overtime.
Good man. Awesome.
Any other questions on that category? General questions, I think, right? Chief, other than what we've talked about anymore? Please, you wanna start?
I just have a, I'm not aware.
Okay.
So a town that does not have a police force, is, their police force is the state police?
Correct.
Okay.
Or they contract with the sheriff's department, or they have a constable.
Oh, a constable. That's right.
Yes.
A constable and Danby.
Ooh, hey, hey, we're not talking about individuals here. I'm just saying. And sometimes you have, you have a constable or
Did you wanna look at the camera and say that?
To generate revenue.
We've already got a ticket. We're done.
Right? We, you know, and that's, and that's, that's not what it's about. It's not about generating revenue. It's not what it's supposed to be about.
Except in Danby.
Except in Danby. Slow down in Danby.
And it's always funny to me, like in the fall, when those apple trees fall off that tree that he sits under, I wonder about the dents on the top of the car.
Got in your car, too. Got in your car.
Make sure you call him constable too, not officer.
Yeah, don't call him officer. He's a constable.
Okay.
That's all I'm gonna say.
Do you have any takeaways?
Yeah, I guess we'll go this way.
Okay.
Go ahead. Thanks. Thank you.
One of the things, it's a great budget and it's nice to see you coming in, you know, below inflation and all that kind of stuff. So thank you for making an effort on that. One of the things that makes it look really good though is a negative $25,000 on the principal payment. What's that? What, remind me what that
So that was our building payment. And, you know, I'm pleased to tell you that, I missed that when I did the budget initially. My friend Melissa here brought that to my attention and I said, poof, boy, now, I said, you know, minus those electronic control devices and building payment, we should be able to work in this second vehicle and get rid of the vehicle with all the headaches. So quite honestly, Melissa brought that to my attention, but that's what it is, is a vehicle payment. I'm sorry, a building payment.
So that is now coming off the budget for the rest of time. We're done with that at this point?
There were two bonds, the two borrowings that we did when we did this building. I think we still have one to go and it will end in 2019, I believe. So we're almost to a point where we'll have no bond payments on the building. It'll be all of the money we put into it to make it a police facility will have been paid.
That sort of goes back to that earlier discussion relative to remediation of the HVAC and all those things. And that might be a good time to be
Yeah. So the proposed 20,000 for principal payments then is for what if that, if they're paid off?
That's the second, that's the second bond.
Okay.
Yeah. And that one will, I think this is, this is the last payment.
I think it's one more. I think you told me it was one more.
One more year?
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll see another 20,000 in this category next year and then that'll zero out also hopefully, unless we have
Maybe we can get like a home equity line or something so we can fix the ventilations.
Personal card there?
Remember, Paul, we don't own the building.
Oh, great. No, I mean, it is good. It's good that that 25,000 allows you to make the capital change in the equipment that you need to do this year.
Yes, sir.
But you won't be able to pull that rabbit out of the hat too many more times.
No, sir.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. According, according to the debt management sheet which you all have, the last payment of 20,000, it will be due in 6/30/2019.
6/30/2019.
Year and a half.
That's good.
Yep. So this should be, this is what we're budgeting for.
Thank you. That's all from me.
Thank you. I look forward to hearing more about your heating and cooling solutions. But great presentation.
Thank you.
Very much.
Yeah, thanks for the great presentation. I don't really have a question. It's more of a comment. I'm worried a little about removing the SRO position because I appreciate, I understand why you took it out. Trying to get it back in in future years might be tough. You know, whenever you take something away, getting, trying to get it back to me is always, and the officers, I see them in the building a lot at the high school and I feel like they're more visible. It's nice seeing different faces, I think, but there's some benefit to having one person trained specific to the school and the needs of the school.
And I appreciate that. You know, I will tell you, I'm gonna address two things quickly. We have received nothing but positive feedback about placing an officer at the high school. Your temporary principal is wonderful to deal with.
Absolutely.
Christopher Barnes is outstanding to deal with. I'm gonna miss Dave Berio when he decides to go. And it also has allowed the officers to see the school administration in a much different light. We're very involved at the school. We go to their safety and security meetings. We're doing pre-planning. We're attending the fire alarms and the lockdowns and we're doing all sorts of things there, which is absolutely needed because the kids need to see the police in a different light.
Absolutely.
Not always as that authoritative, you know, do this, do that. And it has worked extremely well, both on the high school side and the CDC side. You know, it was, it was a little disheartening to look at this and, I mean, I didn't have to beg, but, I mean, getting you guys to understand the importance of SROs in our, in our local schools was relatively easy for me last year. But at the same time, presenting a budget and making sure that we're, we're not placing too much of a burden on the taxpayers. Look, we've had a lot of things happen in the Bennington community. We've had a lot of improvements. I'm extremely proud and this is not because for any other reason. You know, I used to go into the highway garages and be like, man, I wouldn't wanna work here. And, you know, RJ and Stu and Larry and Mark have done an outstanding job at this facility. This is what the town of Bennington should be known for. Great facilities, great equipment and excellent staff. And right now, we have that. And, you know, I appreciate what you're saying. I don't wanna push my luck with the budget, but if you see fit to add that back in, I would love to come back to you with figures. I mean, we did send an officer to school resource officer training for a week down in Connecticut in anticipation of placing the officer at the school. Just, it's really tough right now. And we're not the only agency. Please don't think any less of me or Stuart or any of the other town staff. I mean, Michelle gets, she's fun, but, you know, when you have to keep bringing in new people and have her do all that paperwork that has to be done. Listen, this is not a Bennington problem. This is a statewide, nationwide problem. I just went to a conference down in Connecticut and there was a two-hour block on hiring employees and, you know, and retaining them. And it's a huge problem in this country right now. The younger generation, the millennials, they jump ship. You know, they spend two or three years and they think the grass is greener someplace else. And it's hard for us too because most of the employees that leave are really good employees and they have a lot of potential. But it's very, very difficult. And I'm not trying to be funny. It's very difficult to compete with the take-home cars, the dental insurance, the eye insurance. And then the big thing is, when you work for the state police for the most part, you go home at 2:00 in the morning and you don't have to come back till like 7:00 or 8:00. And we run a midnight shift here. And that's, that's the shift. We interview people. Oh, chief, I really want this job and I wanna work for you. And oh my God, this is such a great department. I read the internet. And oh my God, a lot of people say nice things about you. Some people don't like you on Facebook, but hey, I want to work for you. And I'll work the midnight shift, I promise. I'm gonna do the business again. They're on the midnight shift for two years. When the hell am I getting off the midnight shift? The midnight shift sucks. My stomach hurts, my
I thought you told me you weren't gonna be funny.
Yeah. I'm done. But the bottom line is, is that, you know, when you can go to another agency and get to go home and be with your wife or whatever, be with your kids, it's a little bit different. That, you know, this job isn't what it used to be. You know, people are super critical of the police now. Years, years and years and years ago, everybody just loved the police. Think about the days of John Dean and Eddie Coyne and all those guys and, you know, when they just gave you a hug and everything was okay. We're supposed to hug people now too, but I'm not into that. So
I was gonna say, you asked me for a hug.
Maybe after we come off the camera, we'll be all right. But, no, all kidding aside, I appreciate it. If you see fit, I'd love to come back and explain more to you. But, you know, in talking with Stu, I really did think that this was the most responsible way of doing things and not creating a burden for the taxpayers. You know, we do our best to get bids and buy products reasonably and buy the equipment that we need. You know, you don't see any of my people running around with super-duper fancy equipment. We buy the essentials, the bare necessities, what we need to be a good police agency and provide a great level of service to the people in this community. And I enjoy my job. I enjoy coming to visit with all of you. There's lots we can do. New experience camp. I'd love to bring Rob Marowski in some night and Gracie and have her perform for you. Or Rob, he might perform too. And, but you know, we really try hard to keep this community safe. We really do. And I appreciate the support from all of you. Stu is a great boss. He really is. And a great friend. And he does a wonderful job here as well. So I appreciate it.
Not to scoop his summary, but can we keep that Chad's point on the radar, please? You know, I do think that the connection to the schools, we all know that the schools are where we have to put a lot of our chips. And if we've got a building principal payment coming off in a very short order, rather than buy another car at that point, you know, I do think it would be great to be really considering the investment and making sure that law enforcement is feathered well with the schools. So I'd like to make
I guarantee you it'll probably be in next year's budget if we don't try to do something sooner.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's the, there are only one resource officer.
I have, I have a school resource officer assigned to the middle school four days a week. The reason why we do that is so that the officer stays in touch with what's going on in the police world at our office. And then the other resource officer would be assigned to Benell. And, and right now, we're, again, we're running that off of 4120. So it's different faces. But at the same time, in talking with Jim Culkeen, listen, I know we're not supposed to take things for free and all that other stuff, but I made an exception. The principal at the, at the elementary school was so impressed with the police, bought us a bunch of fruit this year, which was healthy, not cookies and candy and stuff, and sent them over to the office. And I graciously, gracefully accepted those and handed them out to the staff. I mean, it's just nice to have people, to realize that people appreciate what we do. And I think we have a good working relationship. I'd like to keep that and assign somebody to the school. But again, for the last time, was just trying to be responsible. And, you know, it's, it would, you know, it would add about $50,000 back into that wage line, so.
What is Vic Malani's role at the high school? I mean, I know he's
Love that guy.
Love that guy.
He, you know, retired law enforcement and he's, he's basically a safety and security officer over there.
Okay.
And works very hard to keep the students safe over there. And he's always at our meetings, always coming up with new ideas, new proposals, and, you know, supports the Bennington Police Department, praises the police all the time. He's just an all-around great guy. He really is.
You know, I know it's not supposed to be a profit center, but hearing your comments about the dispatching and some of these other opportunities that we have, I think we've gotta look at that to make this a, an opportunity to take for the Bennington community. Because taking away an officer at the high school, I mean, that's, and your comment about they get to meet administration and the students and there's that interaction, that's as valuable as you can get. It's hard to put a price tag on it, but I guess we have
And it's not just that too. I mean, we're going into the schools and, you know, we're doing safety sessions. I mean, this, some of that money that I was telling you about the employees, how they give $2 a week. And we bought Halloween safety bags. We went to all the local schools. We went to all the private schools. And we took those bags that were bought with money that the officers contributed and we put that out there. And it's amazing that the little kids come running up to you. They wanna hug you. They wanna do, I mean, it's just, it's just a different approach for us to be involved in this community rather than showing up at their house and arresting mom or dad for domestic violence or whatever. And I think it's much needed in this community.
Pass the word. We're really fortunate as with the fire department to have you in the leadership role. And your department is outstanding, recognized and the state in that context too. But we look forward to having maybe an agenda where we talk about the new experience camp and
Sure.
Gracie and the like.
Sure.
Because I think that's all important for our community to realize that we're getting a pretty big bang for our buck. And the budget this year reflects that, but we don't wanna be so pound-wise as the penny foolish or whatever that is. So thanks very much and go and turn on the heat again and again.
I will. We need to turn the heat on here too. I don't know what's going on with that.
We'll take a break a bit for about 10 minutes. Okay. We're gonna reconvene and continue the discussion. Talking about the highway fund, but before we get there, I just wanna say thanks to bringing you Vermont. We've got outstanding muffins this morning.
Outstanding.
And the coffee. It'd be, I'll tell you, it's a great, it beats the donuts. But I know some folks love the donuts, but this is probably the most healthy muffin I've had in a long time. But it's really good. Anyway, RJ, good morning.
Good morning.
Sorry to make you sit in the cold weather. Oh, this, it's colder outside.
Yeah.
But men, a lot of your men are out there probably right now?
Yeah, they have been.
It's been, how many hours have some of these guys been out there?
They all have.
They all averaged around for the last two or three weeks, 61 hours, 63 hours.
It's going to be a long winter.
It is going to be a long winter.
I mean, RJ talks about it only, it really only snows on the weekend and generally on Sunday.
Yeah. Sundays and holidays have been a top, top time for any snow events this year.
It's true.
The most expensive, expensive time.
Only management would notice that.
Yeah.
Isn't there forecast for tomorrow for another storm?
No.
I don't think so.
Monday. It's going to moderate up to 15, 20.
I think I've got a rain coming this week. Really?
We're going to hit the highlights. It's on page six, the highlights and then page 13, page 13 on the actual budget.
Tom, I'd like to start by, I'd like to thank the select board for the support for the new DPW facility at 78 Bowen Road. The highway department along with the water department have moved in at this point. We still have a lot of work to do inside and out, but we're all in there and the communication already has been a great asset, just being under the same roof, you know, with the water department. And both highway garages, I used to try to make it to all four shops in the morning and that doesn't work. So at least having three of the departments under the same roof has been greatly beneficial for myself.
It's great. And I, I think the board realized how bad it was when you gave us that tour of downtown that you couldn't get around the trucks, much less than, the highlight was really the, the room where you had the break room. Then I thought that was the bad, but then I went to the cubby area. So it's, it's impressive what you guys pulled together and we all rode together and the community did as well, so.
You should give us another month and then stop by the new facility because someday it's not snowing because now there's room in between the trucks and it's such a better work environment.
Great, thanks.
I, I should, before we get, get too far along, a gentleman sitting there with the baseball cap on is Larry Gates. He's our new assistant, public works director. He actually was promoted from our water department into that position and he's been doing some great stuff.
Looking forward to hearing and meeting him. Thank you. Go ahead, RJ. I think we talked about the obvious challenges where salaries and wages area, you're going to get right into that or how would you like to handle it?
Stu usually starts with the percentage at the highway departments.
Sure. Yeah, the highway, highway fund is up only two and a quarter percent this year. Remember, we, we promised the taxpayers when they supported our, our bond issue last March that we would incorporate whatever new bond costs into the budget without raising their taxes. And so when you look at this budget, you will see a drastic reduction in the projects costs because that's where we can cut. And we do incorporate the first bond payment for the new facility into this year's budget. And the increases that RJ will talk about in, in detail really are related to the reorganization in the salaries and wages and of course, workers' comp. Health insurance costs also had some changes, but I'll let RJ take it from here.
Will that also be in future budgets as well? So bond payments that are coming?
Yeah, so it's a 20, 20-year bond payment.
Okay, I just want to be clear on that. That the increase that was added to RJ's budget because of the, the bond, that's being considered in future budgets as far as offsetting increases. So how much would that bond payment increase on top of your normal budget? And I think that's important to note, for the next 20 years, you've kind of accepted the burden of this bond payment hitting every one of your budgets.
It's about, it's in there.
252,000.
252,000 this year. And the way, the way the bond bank works is the principal remains the same for the full 20 years.
No, I, I, I get that, but I'm just saying, I mean, RJ, you kind of underst, I mean, you know that you, you've taken on a, a, a big chunk of money that's now hitting your future budgets for 20 years to come. Maybe not you personally, but you for the next 10 years or so, 15 years, whatever you think's appropriate. Is, am I hearing that correctly? It's not just for this budget, it's for all future budgets.
And, but it, it, it will decrease. The, the principal stays the same over the 20 years. The first five years of, of payments have a high, the highest interest attached to them and then the interest slowly drops. So you'll, yeah, this will be, this will be the worst year and then it'll slowly recede as the interest drops on the, on the payment.
And it comes out of my projects, so normally I would have 252,000 less paving to do mostly. This year it may work out very well with the PFOA in the west side of town where the roads should have been paved a couple of years ago, which were budgeted last year, this last summer to pave. But due to, to the PFOA project, we put those aside. And with the cost to patch the PFOA areas in the roads, with this budget, with the FY19 budget, we should get the same probably 10 miles of road paved this year, even though we reduced 252,000 in my project. So we shouldn't see a difference in amount of work this year at all and the taxes won't go up because of the new bond. It's a pretty good, if every, if the stars are lined up, no one should see any difference.
I just wonder if it's going to be tough to continue this, this trend. I mean, am I missing something here? If PFOA covered us for FY19, what's going to cover us for FY20 on the project list?
Frankly, you will see a reduction in the number of projects that we're able to do on an annual basis. I, I think that that, after about five years, the, the bond payment drops significantly enough that we'll be able to start increasing those project costs and to regain our, our footing, so to speak, on, on where we are and what we're trying to accomplish.
But wouldn't there be some consolidation of efficiencies that would actually potentially save, you know?
We're, we're, we're hoping that, we, we certainly will have personnel and equip, equipment efficiencies. We don't yet know what it's going to cost to operate this facility because it is so much larger than the two combined facilities that we were utilizing. So yes, it's energy efficient. The lighting systems are energy efficient. The heating system is certainly energy efficient, but we'll have to see. And when we look at this budget, we're, we're really, in a sense, to some degree, guessing that this is what it's going to cost us to operate this facility. We just don't know.
I understand that. And it's not really part of the budget discussion, but you know, we do have that other property that will come off the, the need list, you know, the depot street and the orchard road.
And if we, I mean, that revenue in one sense, if revenue comes from those, the sale of those buildings, I mean, at some point, that conversation should be had, is that money that could be allocated towards RJ?
And, and that would be the plan. Since they are highway facilities currently, any, any income generated, whether it's by lease or by sale, would, would go against the revenue side on, on the highway fund.
That could be a longer-term answer to that for the project.
Depends on what we get.
It's a good discussion.
Can I just say, I'm a little surprised at the discussion though, because I did, in the conversations, my, my sense of this was that the, the savings that we were achieving by, through consolidation and a more efficient, a more efficient facility, we're going to, would offset additional costs because in no, nowhere in the conversation that I remember was there a discussion of reduced, potential reduced services or being, you know, not being able to do as much as we've done in the past, which obviously could mean not doing some things that we really should be doing. So I, I don't know. I, I am, I am surprised to hear the conversation go in this direction now and I, I don't, I would just at some point like to hear more about that, not right this minute, but.
No, I think that's the principle. I think that's a really pivotal issue and you know, that it's great that you're, the roads you're going to get and still get, keep the 10 miles going, which is a good goal, you know, at least do 10 miles every year and that's great if we can do that every year. But it does look like you're cutting back on the sidewalk stuff too. And, and we have a sidewalk plan. I don't know if we're getting, if we're, if we're almost all the way through our sidewalk plan, but it, it looks like maybe we're, we're finding some savings by doing less sidewalk repairs as well. So I think that's, I'm with you a little bit, Jeannie, you know, let's, let's not go too thin on what the, on what you need so that you don't end up in a situation like you came into where there was too much deferred work.
And no worries, FY19, there should be no worries. I'm used to do, getting more done with less. I thi, I think the efficiency being under one roof will definitely help the budget. And you know, 10, 10 to 11 miles of road per year for the last three or four years is, is great. It's, it's a little bit better than we should be actually. So we're catching up on roads. If, if I get done what we want to this year, if all the PFOA projects are done on the west side of town, we're, we're going to be in very good shape. I'm not at all worried about getting behind at this point with the plan I have in my head. So I hear your concern, but we're in good shape, especially with this FY19 budget.
Okay. We'll, we'll press you harder as we get into the numbers. Thanks.
Is it possible, you said that most of the, the, sorry, things are taken out of the projects budget to offset increases in other places? Is it, are there other, are there other places you could possibly cut back on in addition or, and leave the project line alone in years to come too?
Not really. I, I go line for line on the whole entire budget, so I don't really have any. I, I'm pretty much, my budget's pretty much bare bones. This is my ninth budget session and every year, I mean, there's more deductions across the budget than there are additions.
So it's not just the projects that will see an impact?
In this year, yes.
Yes.
But not in years future?
We look directly, directly at the project cost to offset that bond cost.
Correct.
Principally because we don't know what kind of building costs we're going to be facing with the new facility. And, and there were some other increases that you see in this budget, but we didn't try to offset those. They're, they're there.
So but a 10% drop, for example, not to pick on sidewalks, but I, I do care very much about the sort of pedestrian landscape. A 10% drop in our investments in sidewalks might just be for this year and that we might then get our.
Yeah, those were the projects that we identified that needed to be done. I don't think we cut anything from the sidewalk budget.
Well, it's down 10%, so the.
Well, it, but that's really, that's a matter of identifying the projects that we need to do and understanding what their costs are.
Okay.
And also, Don, I, I think we've had money in the past. We're under budget, so I cut 10,000 off of that line item just because I haven't used it last year or the year prior.
Okay. Great.
I like that. And again, the highway administration, the obvious, the fixed costs and the increase in health insurance and workers' comp are all of those things which we have little or no control over.
Right. And you do, as, 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 as we talk about here, RJ obviously, by taking over as public works director, he's, he's receiving an increase in pay for that. But his counter, his assistant will continue to be paid out of the water and sewer funds because they will be essentially now paying an administrative fee into the highway fund because the leadership will now be coming out of the public works as opposed to coming out of just the water and sewer funds. With Terry's retirement, we've basically taken a look at his salary and benefits costs and we've apportioned that some into the highway fund. The remainder gets, gets spread into the water and sewer funds and you'll see those budgets in May.
You will see that, that distinction there.
You will see it then.
But in general terms, Stuart, this $42,000 increase in salaries will be mostly offset by that?
It'll be offset by a payment from the water and sewer fund and if you, is this me that's doing all this?
Static.
Static. I know, I know it is static. I just, I didn't realize there was that much alive. We're, we're.
No, I think it's nature of the air.
Yeah.
It's just so dry.
If you look at the revenue accounts on page 13, you will see a transfer from water and sewer funds of $25,000 a piece.
Yep.
So it's really being offset in that form.
Okay, so that 50,000 is more than offsetting the 42,000 increase.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Sort of that same question had to Chief Deset relative to fitness and opportunities for your staff. Do you have that as far as programs that you participate in? I know, can you use rescue, or the?
Rec Center.
Rec Center, just like the police department?
Yes, we can.
Yes, yeah, all, all employees have that opportunity.
As far as the healthcare costs, Workman's Comp, I, I personally don't understand it at all because I don't have.
You're not the first or the last.
You know, as far as it going up for us, it must be because we're in the pool of, must be a lot of highway workers throughout the state are getting injured and there must be a lot of costs that go along with their injuries because I have a pretty strong workforce and we have had minimal.
That's a great explanation because that's exactly what's happening.
Don't underestimate yourself, RJ.
The pool itself, I mean, some of this is an adjustment because of the previous subsidization of the workers' comp fund, but much of this is just a change in the rates due to injuries in the pool itself. The, the cost of providing workers' comp insurance for highway departments throughout the state have gone up.
Is there another option for us? Do you have to participate in this pool or would the rates still be better?
Well, that, it's an interesting question.
Self-insurance is not.
It's the second time we're hearing this, so just asking the question.
And, and it will level off at some point, but we can buy insurance from private insurers. We joined the league in 1987 or 88 when all of the major insurers that were providing municipal insurance left, essentially leaving municipalities high and dry. We had no coverage whatsoever. We had been trying to, I've been an advocate for joining the league for a long time because the league provides training opportunities and physical fitness opportunities and, and those kinds of things that other, that other insurers don't provide. They provide it at no cost. It's part of what you get back from the league. The league also returns premium to us on an annual basis. There is no other private insurer in the world that does that. So there's an advantage to being in the league. Over these last couple of years, the workers' comp issue has been the one very, very difficult thing to swallow, but it is, it is something that is industry-wide. Every, every insurer that is providing workers' comp insurance has seen their rates go up, which is the cost per individual. Because we're in the pool, we, we suffer somewhat, perhaps more in a bad year than we would otherwise. But yes, we could go, we could bid those privately and, and many, many years municipalities will take a look at that. We've, and I, I happen to belong to the passive board. I'm on their board of directors, so I have inside information that I can share with you. We, we gain and lose municipalities every year in the pool. We find that now that there are insurers stepping back into the municipal market, there are some pretty good rates out there, I would guess. And we're, we're seeing some of our larger municipalities leave, but we're also seeing new municipalities coming back to the league. They may have left years ago and now they find that their insurance costs are skyrocketing and they're not getting anything back for it and that, and that, and they're coming back into the league. So it, it, that's a cyclical thing and it's something that, that, you know, in the future, Bennington may have to be one of those that takes a look at that. We have, we have a requirement to notify the league. I think it's at least 60 days in advance. it's at least 60 days in advance that we are considering leaving, and that is our, the League operates on a calendar year for insurance purposes. So we'd be, we'd be have to take a look at that sometime in September. I can probably guarantee you that the first time we got a quote, it would be something less. Whether or not that would be held over a year-to-year basis is another question. And you get no return on premium. So when we have a really good year, we get a return on premium. We've, we've had, we've had a couple of tough workers' comp years, and that's what we're suffering through right now.
Going just to the general health insurance, you know, that issue, you know, it's a 24% increase here.
Well, in, in this particular case, we've had a number of employees that have either had children or gotten married, or-
And come on-
So they've changed their plan, and, and they're moving from a single plan to a, a more expensive plan.
Stuart, back to your previous description, is there, is there a small-town, large-town divide on who's getting in and who's getting out of the VLCT pool?
Uh, in the last year, one large town left us. We picked up, because the League also can cover solid waste districts and, and other municipal entities, and I use municipal in quotes, we've picked up probably somewhere in the range of five smaller towns and solid waste districts have joined the League. So it's, when a big municipality, I mean, if Bennington were to drop out of the League's pool, it would be a substantial problem for the League because of the, the revenue generation that they anticipate and, and having sufficient reserves set aside. I mean, it's, it, it acts like an insurance company when it's deciding how to manage its funds. It has some advantages, perhaps, because the regulations are slightly different for municipal pools than they are for private insurers. But our rates and our, our determinations are reviewed every year by the Insurance and Banking Commission, which happens to have offices in the same building as the League, so they have to run upstairs to get their rates approved. So it's, there's, there's oversight, so we're not, we're governed, but we're, we're governed a little differently than the private insurer.
It does seem like something that we, we probably owe it to the town of Bennington at some point to at least cost it out. You mentioned there's a 60-day notice period if you're considering changing, but I think you probably meant if you're changing, right? So we can consider at any time.
We can take a look at it. I mean, we, I, I don't mind sharing this with you. This year, Blue Cross Blue Shield, the plan we were in, which has been a very good plan for us since we were forced into the, the health insurance pools, we had, we were in a standalone situation, but last year we were forced in to-
Pick a plan.
Yeah, well, we picked a plan that worked for us. We saved initially when we joined, I don't know, we saved almost a million dollars on an annual basis, but we've seen our rates continue to climb because we're in now the State of Vermont's pool, and that's a pool that is unfortunately picking up all of those folks who have not had insurance or who are less, perhaps less healthy than our working group are. And, and we're seeing an increase in our healthcare costs of, well, 18% over the last two years. That's a substantial jump, when we were used to jumps of 2% to 5% because our, our group is a healthy group. So next year, and I've, I've already talked with Michelle about this, we're, we're going to take a hard look at MVP-
Okay.
-which is the only other major insurer in, in the insurance pool. It is the State of Vermont's. It's either Blue Cross Blue Shield or MVP. Or we may have to look at reducing the plan and, and then moving to a higher deductible plan with less benefits in order to, to level out those costs. I would prefer to stay at a plan that gives you the benefits but saves you the money. And we've been able to do that up until the last two years.
I think I have to take my leave. I have to leave for service. Thanks, RJ. It's been great working with you over this last, especially this last year. It's been exciting. Pass my words and all the, the, my colleagues, you know, we've got a, when you drive around town, you see a lot of improvements over the last year or two.
Thank you.
And not just in my neighborhood, but across the spectrum. And when we get the PFOA roads back to where they should have been, or probably, you can take advantage of that opportunity to make it even better. Thanks.
Okay. Yeah, thanks, Tom. So, just to be clear on timing, we're, we're going to take this to 11 o'clock? Is that, is that what people are braced for?
Yeah.
Okay. And we have a need for a brief executive session on personnel matter afterwards, so keep that in your minds in terms of timing. Yeah, so RJ, bring us down your highlights here, and then we'll let people loose on any other questions they may have.
Okay. Under the downtown School Street, Pleasant Street enhancement project, this has been going on for quite a few years. Mike Carrington started with it. Now Zerwatt took this over. Hopefully, there's construction that starts this coming summer. So, that's why this, our share of the grant is, that's what that $67,000 is.
It, it is, it's a project that, that is now five years old. It was granted five years ago. We've been carrying the local share costs in every budget for the last five years, and I can tell you, these, these enhancement projects move as slow as just about any other VCHN's project. Interestingly enough, we are now required to have a clerk of the works on the job when we have someone who's obviously very, very capable of overseeing the job. But the State of Vermont has determined that all enhancement grant funds must have a clerk of the works on the project. Now, that might work and might be necessary for small municipalities who are getting these monies. It shouldn't be necessary for the larger municipalities that have highway superintendents or public works directors that are obviously trained and able to handle that. But nonetheless, that is the, the new requirement. We, we have been contracting in this particular job. I think we were intending to go with an engineer from DeBois and King. State has a shortlist. You select someone that you've, some firm you've worked with, and they're provided. RJ is right. We hope it goes forward this year. We're not certain that it will.
Okay.
Can, can you talk about what, what the construction plans are for this year, if they do go forward?
In this particular project?
Yeah.
Yeah. The School Street, Pleasant Street project was essentially new pavement, new sidewalks, especially along Pleasant Street, along the back of that parking lot. That is the massive parking lot you see there. Some landscaping at the corner of School and Pleasant. We worked with TD Bank in order to secure an appropriate easement to, to enhance that corner. And new street lighting, the historic street lighting along School Street. It will require some movement of poles from Green Mountain Power. They've been relatively cooperative. The, the hang-up that we've had over the last several months is, is getting Comcast and Verizon now, whoever they're, not Verizon, but FairPoint or whoever their new owner is, to, to agree because they have to move their lines. So anytime you relocate a, a pole, you have three utilities that you have to deal with. And so it creates, it slows the process down even more. But the biggest holdup in this particular project has been securing the construction easements. Not that we haven't got them, we've got them, but the State of Vermont takes months to review any easement. It's just the right-of-way division moves very slowly. But it's, it's basically enhanced sidewalks, enhanced street lighting, make it a little nicer to look at.
A lot nicer. I think the board's really in favor of that Pleasant Street, School Street project. Or I shouldn't speak for the board, but I am. It's great to see that.
It would be, yes. I mean, we've actually, initially, we started on Pleasant Street. It was supposed to go from the North Street up, but we've already moved in and enhanced North Street. We've already done sidewalk and pavement there because we just couldn't wait. It was in such bad condition. So, we're hoping that this thing will move forward. We'd like to get it done.
Okay. Under traffic control devices, this is a level funded 513560. This is no different than the budget was last year. This is not an increase. I think this is here just to show you that we're upgrading all of our crosswalk signals that are failing. You've probably noticed traveling through town, Main Street, Benmont, Main Street, the four corners at times, and Park Street and County Street, the lights will just go, the crosswalk signals will just be going into cycle. No one will be around to push them, but they're not working properly. So, we've been spending a lot of money on these crosswalks in the last couple of years, trying to fix them, upgrade them.
RJ, just on that one, that, the actuals for '17 were quite a lot, the budget was quite a lot lower than the actual. Are you confident that this 5950 is enough for what you plan to do? Excuse me. So in, in '17, 69,000 was budgeted and 101,000 was spent. No criticism, but just, is the 595 likely to be the final number or lower?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm trying to think. We had a lot of failures that weren't budgeted for, by Henry's Market. We had to put all brand-new lights there because the other ones, everything from the wire that went up the pole to the heads were totally, completely falling apart. So, that's where the extra money was spent.
That was 30,000, yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Other questions on this item? Anyone? No?
We already spoke about projects. I don't think we have to go back to that line.
And, and just to clarify for those folks who are new to this, generally, when I, when I, when I develop the highlights, I'll, I'll try to highlight all capital purchases, whether there's a change in, in the budget or not. I want to tell you what we're planning to do. And then I'll highlight contracted services and things that we see on an annual basis, so we tell you what we're looking at from a contracted basis. And then, then we highlight the, the oddball things, the things that skyrocket, and we try to tell you what they are. So, when you're looking at these things, you're gonna, you're, you're gonna be looking at equipment purchases, you're gonna be looking at contracted services. Those are generally the things I try to give you as much detail on as I can.
Before you leave projects, it's just, the reason we were making a squawking about this at the beginning is that, that amount of money going into projects this year is down almost 50%. So, which is, you know, a, a nice belt-tightening thing to do, but I think we all, we're just concerned that, are we doing less work than we need to? But you've assured us that we're still getting our 10 miles, 10 miles a year in, so I think, I think I'm satisfied with that. Anybody else?
And there's sidewalks down under construction and maintenance.
Sidewalks are down also, yeah, about 10%. But Stuart addressed that earlier, that this is a one-time, one-
Yeah.
So buildings?
Okay, buildings, you'll see $15,600 increase. This is because we have a new building now that is much larger than we've ever had before, in which we, budgeting for a cleaning service, possibly hire a part-time person for 20 hours a week to, year-round, just to go through the building and keep it as good-looking as it is now, to do garbage, clean floors, vacuum, and keep everything tidy. Electric, you know, that's, we had a big transformer removed from the new facility, and I don't know a lot about electricity, but this is supposed to be a great savings. We didn't need the power going into the building, and this is, as Stu said, kind of a guesstimate on electricity for the building.
What was the, you know, for, you, we had two facilities, the Depot Street, the one and the one over by Molly Star. What was the electric usage for both of those historically? Do you have any idea?
We, we were budgeting about $5,000 a year for the, for electrical costs.
For both of them?
Combined, yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, it looks like your actual is about $6,600 in '17.
Yeah. It really depends on, on the particular, particular year, and sometimes rate increases catch us. But, yes, we, we suspect that we will spend, spend more on electricity to operate this building.
Can you explain why?
It's just the size of the building. It-
Is it heated electrically or?
It, no, it's not heated electrically, no. It, and, and the, the lighting is LED lighting, so it's, it's-
$24,000.
It's the most efficient lighting, but you're, you're heating a building that is 40-some-odd thousand square feet. I mean, it's an acre in size.
Why would, I'm-
We'll know a lot better next year, after we've had it for a year.
We will, we will know much more, much more next year than we do now. And remember, this building will house, other than the seasonal equipment that will be stored off-site, this will house all of our equipment. There'll be nothing stored outside. So we will be in conformance with the stormwater rules and regulations with regard to outside storage of equipment and metal and steel products.
And as you know, Jim, we had pretty limited lighting in our old buildings. Yeah, they, they were a nightmare to work in for many reasons, so they were pretty much old covered bridges that got nailed together, so.
Got a shear habit.
We talked about sidewalks.
Yep.
Construction and bridges?
Yep. We plan on replacing the Silcro-covered bridge roof for $50,000. We've been, we've been real aggress-
Perimeter?
We, we've been real aggressive on our bridges in the last few years. Henry has a brand-new bridge. All three covered bridges have been painted. The deck's been repaired at Henry Bridge, and any of the, not sheathing, but boards on the outside that were broken have been repaired. So, I believe after this fiscal year, I think our covered bridges will be right up to par. There won't be any monies needed next year for this.
What's the roof on the, is that asphalt on the covered bridge?
We replaced the Henry Bridge with cedar shakes. That's what was on it. I, I get the other two confused sometimes. You don't look at the roof when you drive up, but I, I believe it's a metal roof.
Okay.
And, and following up on that, if, if in fact this is the last major expense on our covered bridges, next year I would be recommending that that same amount of money be placed into a reserve for other bridges. We have other bridge projects, and every time we do a bridge project, there is always a local share, and it ranges from 5% to 10% of the total cost, if we have it in reserve, that we don't have to keep building our budget to meet that.
That makes great sense. Anticipate it, yeah.
We have two bridges under radar right now. The Paper Mill Bridge on Main Street, near Beach Street. Pepper Mill, I'm sorry.
Pepper Mill, yeah. That's been on for a while.
Yes. We're trying to get that on the top of the state's priority list, which I hope it's sooner than later. And also the bridge on Depot Street, near Rite Aid, that also will need to be addressed in the next few years.
It's a big one.
And those are, well, they're both deck replacements?
Hmm. I think that's, oh, no, you've got vehicles still, right? Vehicles and equipment?
Yep. Yeah, lease payments, it's, it's just information, I think, for you, the board. Equipment, we plan on replacing one, one-ton pickup, or one, one-ton dump truck this coming year. It's a 2008, that's what we'll be replacing in 533830. We replaced, there was two trucks identical. We've replaced one this last fiscal year, the one we're in now, and hopefully this coming fiscal year, we, we can replace the other. And also, there's budgeted a 20-ton trailer- budgeted a twenty-ton trailer, um, for nothing else, uh, but safety reasons. Uh, the one we have now is a, um, it's kind of a dangerous trailer to load some of the equipment we have.
Is that the one we chiseled you out of last year?
It wa, yes.
But you really need it?
We, we definitely need it.
For safety reasons?
Definitely for safety reasons.
Okay.
And our other ones probably, it's a guess, but I, I don't have the list with me. Twenty-five years old, thirty years old. Um, but any, you're welcome to come over and watch us trying to load it sometime. Um, if you want to convince yourself that it's uh good money to uh budget for.
Will this twenty-one thousand fix that whole problem? Make it safe? Make it?
It would be a totally replacement.
And, and it's exactly what you want?
It's a new trailer.
Okay.
It was October when I got the price, but that must be what the price was from the trailer company, yes.
Can you keep the old one, RJ? You sell the old one, or how's that work?
Uh, we'd definitely sell the old one, I think.
So there'll be a little bit of money there.
Uh, the dealership, I do remember this number. The dealership said it, its value is three thousand dollars.
So, percentage is pretty good.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, in the uh, as far as the bigger purchases, uh, we're going to uh replace, or we'd like to replace a tandem axle dump truck, um, with a new tandem axle dump truck. It'll be in service for eight years. Um, this will be the first tandem dump truck that we'll be trading in. I'm hoping, and I'm told by the truck dealers, that uh there's going to be a much larger market to trade this in. And I hope instead of um getting eight to twenty-five thousand in trade-in, we're looking at forty to sixty thousand dollar in trade-in, because there's more of a market for trades. So I'm real anxious this year to see what the results are going to be for uh bidding this truck.
That's all part of your capital plan?
It is.
Can you keep them in good shape, I've gotta say?
Excuse me?
If you keep the trucks in good shape.
Yeah, we.
I'm always pleased to see uh the guys cleaning the uh, the undersides of the trucks, no matter what time of the year, at the Depot Street Garage. And, and on the long run, um, well-maintained vehicles sell better.
It's definitely part of our maintenance plan. Um, and I tell the guys, you know, if they feel weird about spending time cleaning the equipment, it's, it's not, that's part of the job, that's part of uh our maintenance plan. Because if, if salt's sitting on them, they're going to rot through, and it's going to cost us a lot of money for maintenance. So uh, we've upped the undercoating. Um, brand-new trucks now get undercoating right from the front bumper to the rear. Um, and cleaning is uh, we do a lot of cleaning. Um, a lot of people think they're all new trucks, but you know, they, they may be ten years old, but um, they, they look very good. And they touch them up, and um, we've even had uh, I don't, uh, like the bed liners, they spray in now, vehicles, pickups nowadays. They even spray some of the dump trucks with those, where we've had dirt, when you load them, rust out the sides. And now we're hard oxing.
Good.
Whatever they call that stuff. Um, though, so yes, the trucks look very good, and the guys are working very hard at uh keeping them clean.
Chad, you had a question?
Well, we're talking about maintenance. Um, do we currently employ a mechanic?
No, we do not.
Is that something we've thought about? I thought that was mentioned about, now that all the build, all the trucks are in one building?
We've looked at, at the, the cost of a mechanic versus the cost of repairs, uh, probably for the last decade. Um, part of the problem in the past was, we didn't have a place for the mechanic to work.
Yes.
Uh, this facility may give us that opportunity to take a hard look at that. Um, when you look at repair costs that run in the range of seventy thousand dollars a year, yes, a mechanic might, might cost you fifty thousand of that uh plus benefits. Um, and then you've got to just worry about, what are the costs of the parts? And, and is it, is it, is it worth your while to have that mechanic on, on duty when the trucks are in operation? So in the wintertime, you might be looking at bringing that person in on an overtime basis and during snowstorms, so that they're available for repairs if they're necessary. We, RJ and I have not taken a hard look at this uh for a number of years, but going back, it, it, when we saw the repair costs starting to spike, we thought, well, maybe there's a better way. And we'll, we'll be taking a look at that.
Is that something the police department could also utilize, like with their vehicles?
Uh, we might be able to, we might be able to use the police department. I'm not gonna talk with my hands.
I'm shocked.
Geez. Uh, we might be able to use, use that, that kind of a mechanic for, for all of that work. Uh, that, that too has to be looked at very carefully.
And you need a lift? Is there already a lift?
There is not a lift in our new facility.
We're, we plan that, we have budgeted in the um town garage to buy lifts. So yes, um, just to add a little more uh to that question, which is a very good question, um, our fuel system, the police station, once it's up and running, we'll be fueling at this facility, um, like every other um department the town has, which should save, they tell me, thousands. But once again, we haven't crossed that bridge yet. Um, and just for a mechanic to do just maintenance for the town, I think would be huge. Um, because FYI, we're paying um ninety to a hundred and twenty dollars per hour, per technician at anywhere we bring our vehicles now. So it's expensive.
Okay, um, line item questions for uh RJ? Anything from you, Chad?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Jeanie?
No, thank you.
Um, not necessarily a line item, but um, again, my, my question that I put to both Chief Doucette and Chief Crawford, um, with respect to where our money is being spent. And uh, RJ, this one goes directly to you, because I heard from um, um, the tire companies that you've done business with. And uh, he told me that it's uh decreased significantly. Can you explain that?
We buy all of our smaller trucks, one-tons, five-fifties down in town, um, through two different companies. We try to spread that around.
Right.
And uh, with a level-funded budget, the big truck tires and the equipment tires are so expensive that we save half anyways on big tires.
Well, that's what I wanted to hear.
And they're Vermont Company that we get those from, and they're an hour away. They come down to do the service.
And are they delivered to us?
Yes, they do.
Good.
They do all the service twice a year. They change.
Who mounts them?
They do.
Wait a second. That's, that's, um.
Excuse me?
I'm confused. Um, they deliver the, the uh, the tires to, to us, and they mount them here, this company?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Well, fifty percent off, man.
That's great.
Can't argue with that.
Just for example, I think, these aren't hard numbers, and don't hold me to them, but I think we saved eighteen hundred dollars per bucket loader tire when we purchased bucket loader tires the last time.
Okay.
Per tire.
And as far as other maintenance and supplies, you do your best to uh?
Absolutely.
Keep that right here in town?
Absolutely.
Okay, good.
Carson, anything from you?
No, thanks, Eric.
Jeanie?
I just have one.
Oh, it's you?
Um, this is something I've been wanting to ask for a while. So when you're deciding what streets get striped, it seems like dead ends and little tiny roads could possibly be skipped. Is it a state law that every road has to be striped, or your road gets striping? And I just, it's something I thought, do they really need to be striped? Maybe we could skip it. My road gets striped? It's, I don't know.
I just soon save the money and not stripe any road, but um, the Class twos get painted every year, um, in which the state does that. They uh, um, supply the equipment and the paint. Um, they only do the center line. Uh, the Class two roads, I think the fog line's important, uh, the white line on the shoulders, because when you're driving and the conditions aren't great, um, I think that's a helpful tool. But we only have to do that probably every four years, five years, because there's no traffic on that white line normally. Um, and if your street is skipped, it's just an oversight from the painting company. They do the set.
No, I'm saying they should be skipped.
Yeah, uh.
Like a double line down a dead end?
Double lines are the requirement for MUCEDD.
Okay.
We, we can't, we can't just put a single line. Uh, I think they tried that long before I came here, and there was a lot of opposition over that. Um, and they found out that years after that, it was uh, um, the law that they're supposed to be striped. Um.
And every road? Doesn't matter if it's a dead end?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, one thing I may add, that uh, if you've noticed, uh, only the Class twos got painted this last summer. I'm holding back, because we always paint in October. It's happened for years here. We pile the roads, and by springtime, you can barely even see the paint. So I'm gonna try something new this year, and the money that we have in the budget, I'm going to paint the roads, and hopefully we get all summer and fall out of that. So we get eight months instead of two months. So um, there's been no complaints yet that I'm aware of. So that's one thing I hope that, a change that works out very well for us.
Great, thank you. Uh, Margie, I have two questions for you. One, one is quick, and one is, was sort of more general, but on uh the very last item, the DPW garage project, it looked like there, um, you know, were some big investments, but now that's down to zero. Are there really no further costs that will be put to the DPW line item at this point?
What number are you on, Donald?
Uh, the uh, two-nine-five-zero-seven-eight-fifty, at the bottom of the reserve fund expenditures. I'm sorry, uh, eight-fifty.
Yeah, we don't, we, we, the eight-fifty account, we generally don't budget for that, because the monies, in this case, the DPW facility is being constructed with bond funds. Those are held in reserve essentially.
Okay, so like the other one, they don't hit the budget?
So we, we, we don't budget to spend those, uh, because all it would do would be to drive up the, the budget when we already have the money.
Okay.
It just shows the expenditure as we use it.
Okay, great. So RJ, you don't get, we don't make you go on TV very often, uh, you know?
Thank you.
Every once in a while?
[laughing]
So I've had a couple of complaints this year from uh residents who feel like we are spending too much money paving roads that aren't in that bad shape. And so, every year except for this, that I've been on the select board, you've run us through a little explanation on your paving philosophy, and um, sort of how you decide which roads to pave. And if you would just very briefly, more for the benefit of people who are listening, describe how you select those roads, so that um, people are very clear that there's a method to your madness.
Um, it's not my philosophy. Um, I agree with it, but it's definitely not my philosophy. Um, any class you go to, and I've been to many on paving, um, anyone you talk to that has tried it themselves, you do the best roads first, the ones that are showing sign of wear. Usually an eight, maybe ten-year-old road that's paved eight or ten years ago. There may be some cracking, um, definitely oxidation. Um, but you, but doing that, you get less rutting. Um, there's a lot less money in major construction, because the um, the paving company literally puts down three-quarters of an inch base. They roll it with a rubber-tire roller, which needs all the blacktop into the cracks and whatever imperfections there are. And then they top coat it, um, with another three-quarter inches. So you're only using inch and a half of pavement to do the, the better roads. Um, they'll last you probably fifteen more years at this point, and they'll be a very nice road. Um, if you're to replace uh pavement on a road that's all broken up, the wheel ruts are horrible, um, like six-inch wheel ruts, you know, it takes a major amount more of blacktop, and you're not going to get the miles, you know. You'd be lucky to get three miles in the uh, um, for projects that year opposed to ten or eleven, because the uh, especially if you have to dig out the total's base, sub-base, work your way up through. And um, you know, a, a new gravel road that just got graded needs at least four inches of pavement. Um, you know, uh, on a brand-new road. So um, that's the only way um, we can keep our head above water with a hundred and twenty-eight miles of road, is to um, pave the best roads first.
It's a very intentional strategy to keep um, keep the number of really bad roads to a minimum.
Right.
And if you happen to.
And we catch up on them. We don't just leave them abandoned. We have, on the west side of town, but like I say, that should have been paved this past summer, but um, which are very rough, rutted, horrible roads. But um, due to the PFOA construction, we, we should get our things and um, plan in order on that end of town also.
And then there are sections of road that, for example, that, that top of South Street, which everybody complains about, but that's state highway.
It's state highway. Uh, the town is responsible for the maintenance, the uh pothole patching, and nothing more. Um, that is still on schedule as a District One yesterday to drop off a grant to um, receive the money that I was awarded for a project that we completed this summer. And uh, they say that's still in the running for the summer to pave all of Route nine, all of Route seven, and sixty-seven in the town of Bennington.
Awesome. Great. Good job. Thank you very much for your efforts. I know you, I know you've put a lot into this. Um, any other questions from the board on, on the Highway Department?
Does that include staffing provided by the state on all that paving, or is that any staffing by you? So you don't touch it?
No, we don't touch that. Um.
Everyone already knew that, sorry, that's new.
No, but that, that's the reason why. So a lot of people complain about that South Street section, but it turns out that if, you know, the state has to pave it, and when they do, we won't have to pay for it. So why should we be building that into our budget?
I, I get it completely. It's great.
But we have to get the state to do it.
Well, the one, one thing though about a major project like this, where the state comes in and, and paves all of these cla, what are considered Class One town highways, we are responsible for changes in manhole elevation. Uh.
Stu's half-right on that. [laughing] They're responsible, they're going to mill and say, it's called mill and fill. They're gonna mill down like two inches and put two inches new blacktop on all these streets. They're going to put the risers uh right to where the blacktop, where we require, require the risers to be. But if the manhole is um damaged, or just, it's, time is done, underneath that two inches, uh, we have to build, you know, from the bottom up. So we have a lot of work, especially in the Sewer Department, um, some in the Water Department, just to stay ahead of this project if it's going to happen this uh coming summer.
Very good project, though, very visible.
Oh, yes.
Meant a lot to everybody to get it done. Thank you. All right. Well, in the absence of any other questions, I guess we thank you, RJ, for uh your diligent efforts and getting so much done.
Thank you.
For your support.
Um, so on the agenda, it's eleven oh five at this point. On the agenda, we have, if time allows, I think Stuart, I mean, what's the pleasure of the board here? I think, most of us are probably looking a little glazed over here. So um, Stuart, what happens if we do not talk about recreation and administrative budgets today?
Uh, we will talk about them next Saturday. And, and my recommendation at this point would be, uh, if we can uh hit those particular budgets first thing, eight o'clock in the morning, uh, and then bring in, uh, I think we have scheduled, uh, the John McCullough folks and the Bennington Free Library folks to talk with us. Perhaps start them at nine or nine-thirty, uh, give them each a half hour or so. Uh, and then uh, we'll deal with the issue of our funding levels for the rescue squad. Uh, and we'll look at uh any other questions you might have. And then the, the last, generally the last thing to do is the uh, an executive session where you discuss the salaries of the manager, the clerk, and the treasurer, because you all set those. And then at the end of the next meeting, if everything has gone well, and we're all very happy with where we are, uh, you could then make a motion to adopt the budgets uh and present them for the annual meeting.
Okay. Well, so far, these first three sections, we've seen very small increases, well below inflation, so that's good. But we have some hard stuff yet to come next week, so we'll look forward to that.
So you'll let those, the libraries know to come?
Yeah, we'll set them at those times.
Yeah.
So is everybody clear on our, our meeting schedule back here? Back here again next Saturday, eight o'clock? And, and as well as our regularly scheduled Monday meetings?
We have a meeting Monday night, yes.
Meeting Monday night, right here, yeah, so.
I'd just like to say publicly, again, this year, this is the second time I've been through this process, we are so fortunate to have the people that we have in the fire, police, and Highway Department. It's just, it's amazing, so.
They're very competent.
Not to mention the town manager who...
It's half-right.
Keeps the pencil sharp.
I'm only half-right.
Yeah, the half-right town manager, right. All right, we have a need to go into executive session on personnel matter. Can I have a motion, please?
Move adjourn.
No, no, I don't want...
No.
All right, executive session.
Second? Okay, all in favor?
Bang, bang, bang.